Order a study session Bloomfield Board of Education, August 6th, 6 o'clock. Lisa, you take attendance?
All board members are present.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna read just a quick statement in celebration of what happened a couple of days ago. So, good evening, everyone. It's not customary for me to speak at a study session, but I have a feeling it's gonna be a long night, so I'll be brief. On Tuesday, our community passed a bond that will provide important structural and education upgrades for our students for years to come. We're so grateful. During these uncertain times, voter turnout was strong and support for our school was overwhelming. With over 70% absentee votes in all 18 precincts, all voting in favor of the bond, we made history. There's never been a better time to be part of Bloomfield Hills and the community who support us. Thank you for the countless parents, students, teachers, staff, and community members who spent years working collectively on this plan, getting feedback and modifications of the plan, and also promoting the plan. We are closer to making the plan a reality and are excited to see the district become an even better place to educate our students. We did it Bloomfield. Two things that stand for me in this process were teamwork and unity. BHS will continue to reflect the values of the community and the fact that improvements will touch every building and every corner of the district. The future BHS is brighter than ever during these unprecedented times. All precincts, as I indicated earlier, supported the bond is something we can all rally behind. No matter what part of the plan for the future resonated with our voters, you all wanted the same outcome, a better education and future for our young people. We will always agree on that. And when you have that in common, you can do anything. As challenging as the year ahead promises to be, please remember that we are united in our goals as we want all what's in the best interest of our students. With that, we will go now, so I can read properly. Davey, put up public comment. I'll change my purple wig for my purple hat. So, public comment. First one is from Rebecca Ely from Eastover. I'm hoping the board will decide at the next meeting to go 100% virtual for the beginning of the school year, maybe 10 weeks or the semester. I have a third grader and a first grader at Eastover. We love our school, but everything that we love about it will be gone due to safe practices. I'm afraid that my children, who enjoy going to school, will grow to hate it. I feel the district is putting the teachers and employees in harm's way and will be unable to keep them and their families safe in the school environment. My family has been social distancing since March, and the thought of lumping my kids in with 500 other students scares me. My kids are desperately craving their caring teachers, friends, and fun. They aren't going to get the safe practices, so I'm hoping you would decide to go virtual in the fall. Eric Lanu, dear Bloomfield Hills Board of Education, my name is Eric Lanu, and I'm a music teacher at the International Academy. I'm writing again to advocate for 100% remote start to the year. Though my position hasn't changed since my last writing, the arguments and supporting evidence has advanced. I want to preference my statements by saying that I would prefer a safe face-to-face reopening plan that was developed and sustainable. I generally miss my students and long for the dynamic and affirming interactions of the classroom. Any of you who know me know that would certainly, but I truly do not believe our current plan or any school face-to-face plan is safe or sustainable. While COVID-19 in Michigan isn't at the same level as it was during the peak this spring, we're still seeing consistent community spread and consistent increases over the past several weeks. There is currently no reason to expect this trend to reverse prior to school starting. Two, countless news articles have cited significant spread of COVID-19 in different camps and schools in recent days. At first, cautionary tales were in the other countries that opened schools without contracting the virus, and now they are from other areas within our own country. We would foolish to turn a blind eye to these and to think that this happens there, but not here. School health, three. School health is the community health. When people talk about the lower risk of severe complications from COVID-19, children are not acknowledging that schools and communities made up both of children and adults. They're essentially saying to those adults, your health and life is worth the risk, though it's never so plainly stated. And only is the willingness to risk the health of others for your children's education not a sound ethical decision, it misses the bigger picture. The risk you are calculating isn't just the seamlessly lower students or the apparently expendable staff. Opening schools will lead to student infections and will lead to community spread through family and friends, which will impact more members of vulnerable populations, leading to more negative health outcomes and likely deaths. Again, the majority of emerging signs demonstrates that children are significant vectors of community spread of COVID-19. It is foolish to comport monetize the risk calculations just teachers and students. That's not how the disease works. Four, keeping a school fully staffed during the fall is going to be next to impossible. Considerable numbers of teachers are retiring early or taking a year of unpaid leave due to the risks. Many teachers live and have children in other school districts that have already decided to go online will be taking their 12 weeks of pay leave to care for their children. Under the Families First Coronavirus Acts, some teachers will be allocated to teach smaller online classes, since those have been offered, which threatens to fully stretch face-to-face classes, which is significant risk given the importance of physical routine illness, and of course, the inevitable teachers who need to quarantine because they have been exposed, show symptoms, or test positive for few experienced subs who want to take such a risky job. Just keeping an adult in every classroom, let alone a qualified teacher who has a lesson plan and knows the curriculum, will be a Herculean task. I believe a stable, consistent routine with a qualified teacher who has a relationship or rapport with the students would be a much less stressful and more educational sound environment for almost all students in classrooms, even if it must be done online, which is admittedly less than ideal. Five, the face-to-face experience we are risking, public health may not provide the educational and social benefits many parents think it will. Students will be allowed almost no freedom of movement or socialization as keeping them from physically mixing or contracting each other is essential, especially since we already cannot provide the six-foot standard spacing. Classroom pedagogies will generally not be allowed to include group work, small group discussion, or distance. Classwork will primarily be done through computers, since teachers will not be handling paperwork due to health risks. Lesson plans will be coordinated with online plans because the same teachers who teach face-to-face will be teaching online sections. Ability to spread out and use outdoor space will be limited to the need to use technology and unpredictable weather. Even talking, like singing and playing wind instruments, may be limited, as I add to aerosol spread, which research shows is likely significant risk for indoor environments. I fear that enacting even our district's substandard health protocols will be dehumanizing to students, masking their faces, restricting their bodies, and silencing their voices. But these measures cannot be avoided for physical safety in the midst of the pandemic, and in fact, should realistically be increased if we go into actually prevent the spread of the virus. Though the robust and interactive online, though may seem counterintuitive, I believe that most students would experience more freedom, expression, creativity, and authentic peer interaction through a robust and interactive online curriculum, much better than we were able to achieve this spring. We can offer that if we're allowed to focus 100% virtual for the beginning of the year. It won't be successful if, again, thrust upon teachers without time to prepare. My hope is that if we make the decision to start with virtual instruction early, a teacher will be given insufficient time to develop the robust needed to engage students. We will be able to develop co-curricular in-person events, an experience that can be done safely to enhance the well-being and learning of students. We'll be able to develop creative schedules or procedures that could allow for safe implementation of face-to-face near future. We could petition federal, state, and local governments to provide emergency childcare for those who are not able to work from home or at-home parents. We could do everything in our power to get our community to strictly adhere to social distancing and mask-wearing outside of one's household, like other countries that have successfully opened schools have done. We cannot lay the blame on the feet of the educators for not wanting to risk the health, lives, and families in order to reopen schools. We cannot ask educators to bear the burden and risk precipitated by the failure of our whole society to grapple with the pandemic. We must get back to school only when to save. Online learning is fraught with inequities and complications, but in the end, online saves lives. Thank you sincerely for your time. Next. Emily Eichenhorn, these appear to be some confusion about whether IB courses will be available in the Virtual Academy. Sorry, it's something popped up my screen. We've available on the Virtual Academy in various online discussion boards. It has been suggested that high school IB courses won't be offered in the VA because, I think they meant I, offered in the IA because the IB organization prohibits them from being offered online. It's also been said that the IB organization disclaims any involvement making decisions about how this district will offer IB courses. My own research has shown that on the IB organization's own website, there is information on how to take online IB courses. So, I would like to know if this plan to treat scheduling of IB courses in the Virtual Academy like all other classes holding them, if there was a high enrollment to do so. If the answer is no, I'd like to know on the basis of that decision, and also like to know what the enrollment threshold would be. Andrea Kane, as a parent and community member for the past 18 years in Bloomfield Hill School District, I'm very concerned for the health and safety of the staff and student participating in the proposed face-to-face instruction option. Our schools are the second homes for our children. The teachers and supporting staff play a vital role in their development. The health and well-being of the people of our community should be their primary concern. The pandemic will end, and when it does, we will need our teachers and supporting staff to help pick up the pieces. They are a virtual part of the Bloomfield Hill School family. No other profession is being asked to do what we are demanding of educators. Grocery workers do not have sustained contact with patrons and have plexiglass shields and proper social distancing practices. Medical professionals have extensive PPE, and their contact with clients is short and limited. Many white-collar workers have the flexibility to work from home, teachers not being offered the same considerations. COVID-19 is not going away in the near future. Until we have a working vaccine, adequate testing, and no new cases for 14 consecutive days, we have no business opening our schools for in-person learning. At the moment, asking our teachers to report to in-person instruction is irresponsible and puts them, as well as their families, in harm's ways. A district, why are we jeopardizing the mental and physical health of our staff and students? School this fall will not be any semblance of normalcy. Furthermore, the chance of any school remaining open for in-person instruction for the school year is next to nothing. In preparing for face-to-face instruction, the best use of the district's time and resources. Is the risk of exposure worth a few weeks of face-to-face instruction? It would make more sense to invest our district's precious time preparing for a robust virtual learning experience. Committing to full-time virtual learning for the first semester with reevaluation for the second semester would also allow families to figure out how to work together to make virtual learning work. We will end up with virtual learning in the coming months, so let's prepare for it accordingly. I do not believe we have the staff infrastructure or budget to reopen safely. Are you analyzing different options for back-to-school? I encourage you to ask yourselves the following questions. Do you believe you can ensure the safety of our staff and students? Do you believe the decisions you are making will retain the staff we need when this whole mess is over? Do you believe you will be able to keep the doors open face-to-face for more than four weeks? Do you believe the community spread is contained to a point that would be comfortable teaching in a classroom with 15 to 20 elementary-age kids, middle schoolers, high schoolers, medically fragile students, and their paraprofessionals? What precise and exact procedures do you have in place for sanitation of all environments in which students, staff, and teachers will come into contact, which includes bathrooms, doors, technology, air ventilation, buses, cafeterias, etc.? How would COVID-positive cases be handled? Complete shutdown of the building. When will that demonstration occur? One case, two cases. How will you ensure the safety of everyone in the building? How will you deal with 25% of asymptomatic cases who display no symptoms? I can go to that, but there are too many questions, very few answers. It's for these reasons that I'm here to advocate for the full virtual until October 31st. At that point, the community spread is more contained, and staff has had a chance to get their footing for what job expectations are this year. Perhaps we could return to school, return to some form of face-to-face instruction. While I'm fairly certain that everyone wishes to return to normal, this is absolutely not the time to put our students, teachers, staff, and staff in an unsafe, uncertain learning environment. Several of our neighboring districts have voted to begin the school year entirely virtual because it is simply not safe to return to face-to-face at this time. We'll endure this, but one life is one life too many. Respectfully, Andrea Kane, Tracy Jardine, if Bloomfield Virtual Association is chosen for Semester One, does the student have or will be responsible to attend any or all Zoom meetings provided? If not, is there a way a student can choose Bloomfield Virtual for Semester One and complete it in timely manner without having to attend scheduled Zoom meetings each day? For example, if a student is being held back due to Zoom meetings and having to attend them, can they choose not to attend the Zoom meetings each day but still complete the work through the Bloomfield Virtual on their own? Stacy Gettleman, if the Board of Education feels that it's safe enough for students, faculty, teachers, and administrators, and consensual staff to come to school in person full-time, perhaps it would be appropriate for the Board of Education to have this meeting in person. It would have set a great example for our school community if the board conducted this meeting over Zoom for the public, if the board conducted this meeting over Zoom for the public to watch, but in a classroom wearing masks with the desk separated six feet apart. If the board is asking students and faculty to return to classroom in person and believes that the risk is low, then board meetings from here should be conducted in person. Reem, we want in-school learning. We don't want to have to leave the district if school is taken away. There is a virtual option for the families that want virtual, and it's only fair if we have the option to have in-school learning as well as a district. We should not be pressured into going virtual because some surrounding districts are doing this. We have a great plan in place and should see it through. Fear should not influence any decisions. If we go only virtual, I'm sure a lot of families will be leaving the district for private schools, and that's not what we want for our district. Claudia Tumia, parents need to vote on whether they think it's safe for their kids to go to school, not board members. We need in-person learning for our children. Keep Bloomfield known as the best district. Allow our children to educate they deserve. Too many of us will leave the district and go private if virtual is the only option. We need to see our in-person plan through. Don't fall into pressure with fearful voices. Let all voices have an option. Yolene Carmo, considering Bloomfield Hills being a great district, as a parent, I feel we should have both options to choose from, virtually for the parents that don't feel comfortable, and in-person for families that do feel comfortable. I've spoken with several families that attend the Bloomfield Hill School District. They are considering private schools. The district leans to online. Erica Solomon, thank you for reading my question aloud. My daughter began in Blumen Kids, went to Way Elementary, is now beginning her final year at BHMS at the eighth grade. Over the years, I've been privileged enough to be part of every aspect of PTO, including room parent, variety show coordinator, possibly the hardest job ever, fundraising committee, nearly $50,000 a year, and PTO president. Not only would I consider the people I met through PTO my best friends, but the teachers and staff as well. In my heart of hearts, I do not feel that many teachers feel safe or comfortable telling either the board or administrators that they're afraid of returning, and they cannot just make both work. I believe they're afraid to let you down, let the parents down, but most importantly, let the children down. With respect, I also believe that it may exist the belief that if the school board gives the current two options, is the belief that the board, that they can try at least appease all parents. My question is a rhetorical one. Could we please just play it safe and open with a fantastic virtual synchronous plan? It feels too much like everyone is spinning their wheels on a face-to-face mission that is almost entirely guaranteed to fail within days, maybe within hours. When the first person in a building tests positive for COVID by recess time, what does the school do for the kids for the next 14 days of learning? Either way, my daughter will be beginning the year fully virtual. However, I feel it is my strongest obligation to stand for the parents who would like more time spent asking teachers to help create a strong competitive virtual experience and less time futility planning how to keep themselves and their students healthy. Again, thank you for your continued support. Tricia Castle, I am writing you today to plead for the option in-person schooling for the 2020-2021. We need to have both options available for working parents. Please have in-person and virtual to all, not just virtual only. I'm a parent of two children who will be attending BHMS in Connet. I'm a trial lawyer. My husband is an engineer. It is also extremely difficult with both of us parents working outside of the home. There is no in-person schooling available. We are fully prepared to make our children wear face masks, as well as the endless supply of hand sanitizer and whatever else is required. We are on board with all safety precautions. Please make the option happen, and no in-person schooling is offered. You are basically forcing most all working parents to suffer income loss just after the bond passed. How will taxes be paid if there is no income? Thank you for your consideration of allowing in-person schooling to be the option for the 2020 school year. Andrea Matti, while I am not obvious to the advantages of virtual schooling at a time of pandemic, I would like to know the board is at least considering what working mothers would have to do to accommodate a virtual program. Even while working from home, it's borderline impossible to tend to all the children in one's own profession. Raina, dear, my name is Raina Romala. I have a son entering his senior year at the high school, another entering eighth grader at Westalls. I am writing to plead with the board for our parents who want in-person learning, the opportunity for their children. Our children need to be back in a classroom. If you all have children who do not have compromised health, we should be able to send them back, send them to school and learn amongst their peers with a teacher. I wondered firsthand, as a working mother, how difficult it was to monitor their school if they were trying to work from home as an attorney. I recently took my youngest son to be to the pediatrician for his checkup. His pediatrician asked my son directly if he wanted to go back to school. My son said that he did, and he feels like he learns better at school rather than at home. I asked the pediatrician's opinion, and he said, without a doubt, children need to be in the classroom. If there are parents that are concerned about their children's health because of compromised immune systems or whatever health issues they have had, they should be able to opt out of in-person learning, but that should not take away the opportunity for the majority of the people who want their kids back in the classroom. Please, let's not make this a political issue and put our children first. Thank you for your time. Naomi, hello, my name is Naomi. Hello, my name is Naomi, and I have two children. One attends BHHS and the other attends East Hills. They have remained at home in isolation for fear of COVID-19. We have lost three family members to this horrible disease. My boys have friends who have lost their parents and grandparents to the relentless virus. We personally know a six-year-old who died from COVID-19 this summer. It does not discriminate based on age, race, gender, or other factors. One of my boys is particularly concerned because he has asthma. Additionally, we have recently moved their 80-year-old grandmother into our home. Thus, we have serious concerns with the district if it maintains students to attend school in person. Stop thinking about our children's young ages and potential for recovery. Think about the elderly who live in our homes with our children. Please reconsider mandating students to attend school in person and maintain an arrangement for remote learning that saves lives. Thank you. Kelly Tumia, hello, my name is Kelly Tumia, emailing the board to have my voice heard regarding in-person learning. It is essential, it is vital, it is crucial to have our kids back at school this fall. I have a senior sophomore and a sixth grader who are all eager and more than willing to run back to school wearing masks and following social distance protocols set in place. My senior voice being stressed and nervous for college for 2021 school year, and now she may not be prepared because virtual online learning is not suffice. Just as our governor said, when she mandated masks indoors, we may return to life safely the way we can return to school also. The benefits of sending to school outweigh the risks. Life cannot stop because of the coronavirus. We cannot harden our homes because of the virus. Parents in our district are emailing and outraged about in-person learning. Can keep simple their kids home, please. Take a look at the numbers of hospitalization and deaths. Our numbers are fine. The virus is mutating, and people are not getting sick. They were there in March and the very beginning of this. We cannot deprive our children from a normal school setting. If parents go back to work, then kids should go back to school. Parents in our district who do not feel comfortable have a right, and their right is simply to opt out of in-person learning and learn from home. Parents and children of our district who are comfortable and willing to go back should have that opportunity. Please consider what we are depriving our children from keeping them home. It is unfair to them. Please allow in-person learning. Bridget Darr, would the board consider returning students of all ages to wear a mask all times other than eating and drinking while inside a BHSD building? As I understand it, the current plan would have some or all students in seven out of eight buildings and six out of 13 grades not wearing a mask in the classroom. This seems like an unnecessary risk, especially since the students will not be spaced six feet apart. Thank you. Jackie, I find it particular this meeting to discuss schools going virtual occurring two days before the election of the bond approval. Karen, my name is Karen Najar. I have four kids in Bloomfield Hill School District. I have two children who have an IEP and need to do in-person learning. During the months at home, my kids had a difficult time learning, processing material, and not being motivated or structured. It was very challenging. Pediatrician asked my children during their well visits, how was the virtual learning? They answered, we didn't learn anything. It makes me so sad. I'm hoping you consider in-school learning for those students and parents who want to send their children. Students need structure, social involvement, and interaction with their teachers. Please consider sending our students back. Help our students learn in school with their teachers and friends. Thank you for your time. Yolene Carmo, considering Bloomfield Hills being a great district, as a parent, I feel we should have both options to choose from, virtually for the parents that don't feel comfortable, and in-person for the families that do feel comfortable. I've spoken with many families that attend the Bloomfield School District. They are considering private school if the district leans to online. Megan, thank you for the board for working so tirelessly on behalf of our students and staff. I'm a parent of BHHS graduate, a rising seventh grader, and a Blumen Kids four-year-old. I'm concerned about the safety of our amazing BH staff and students. There is no possible way to meet the safety requirements that the governor and the CDC outline. We have asked to wear masks, remain six feet apart when in public. It is impossible to do this in our schools. Therefore, our schools should not begin face-to-face until we have no new cases in our community for a designated period of time. Yesterday, our community passed a school bond to secure a brighter future for our children. Let's continue the momentum by showing that we do whatever it takes to protect our greatest asset, our staff, our students. JJ Septian, we, the reasonably silent majority, need our Board of Ed to take time to read the studies and listen to the doctors. We have learned a lot about the virus, which is weakening. It just needs to run its course like any other virus. Please use common sense, turn off the TV, and be open-minded. We'll get back to that. It was at JJ. There you go. We learned a lot about the virus, which is weakening. Okay, thanks, Dave. And just needs to run its course like any other virus. Please use common sense, turn off the TV, and be open-minded to the best possible outcome for the situation. Let us lead the way and become known as a district with the lowest rates of suicide, anxiety, and depression. Let's not fall victim to the 24/7 fear mongering, fake news, and fraudulent death tolls. Our community needs in-person school without draconian measures. We don't want our public schools converted into hospital-like prisons. Our quality of life has been compromised as unnecessary. Long lockdowns continue with no end in sight. Lead by example. Take control of your own health and stop living in fear. I'm recommending that we allow our kids to socialize and learn in a relaxed environment for their health and well-being. They know how to wash their hands and stay home when they are sick. Taking all the fun and enjoyment out of life for an indefinite amount of time because of a virus with a 99.9% recovery rate makes no sense. Children are far more likely to die from the flu. There will always be viruses and flus going around, so we will never achieve zero risk. If you're waiting for zero risk, then we don't need a bond because schools will be deemed too dangerous to ever reopen and therefore be closed permanently. Please vote for in-person learning without all these crazy distancing, sterilizations, and masks. Thank you. Scott McKelvey, I implore you to put your pride aside for a moment and consult with MDs, public health specialists, in deciding the course action, how to open. The parents' perspective should be secondary, and the MEA should be a far distant third. It has come to my attention that maybe a vote, maybe a vote, 8/6 regarding in-school versus 100% virtual instruction. If that is true, I'm appalled to hear that there have been no attempts to communicate. Further, further this, you would imply you've decided to perform this vote immediately after passing a bond. I'm entirely in favor of the bond, but shame on you for thinking so little of the resonance that you would delay pivoting your public position regarding in-person curriculum until after receiving the bond. If this is true, you have all lost any credibility with me, and I fully expect the best, at best, this comment to potentially read aloud with no meaningful commentary or reflection to occur. I personally believe, based on existing evidence, that in-person teaching during Phase Four for elementary students should be required. Pediatric research tells us the younger population less than 16 is not spreading COVID. The CDC's perspective on opening schools currently states content of appropriate mitigation measures similar to those implemented of essential workplaces. The American Pediatric Association states that elementary school children are relatively low-risk, and in general, elimination of high-touch surfaces is preferable to frequently cleaning, implying that any midweek cleaning efforts required to close the schools would be low benefit. My family would be disproportionately impacted by the lack of in-person teaching. My six-year-old son is diagnosed with a high function in ASD and also has an IEP. He struggles significantly with communication, even just playing with children. Every video conference he has joined has resulted in significant stress, and about 25% of the time resulted in emotional breakdowns related to communication challenges, even when I was actively assisting him, because of my wife and my parents. Those single parents will be forced out of work and presumably their homes without school in session, unlike teachers. If you are not heavily relying on a public health expert's perspective, then each one of you will be responsible for the impact to the families, and each of you should hold that guilt indefinitely. Yes, we're all dealing with uncertainty. It's hard right now. Families will begrudgingly accept any conclusion. However, families will be much more accepting if you are transparent and show that you are truly relying on public health care experts and not being swayed by the MEA's perspective. Please don't make this a political conversation. Consult the medical and public health experts to determine the decision that properly assess the risk and then convey it to the district. Amanda Pulakrap, in the last few days, I've had the opportunity to be in discussions with a lot of high school moms. Many of us would keep our kids home and do Bloomfield Virtual if the class offerings met in-person class offerings. Specifically, my son is taking on his Algebra II. I don't see that listed in Michigan Virtual or Bloomfield Virtual. This is the only reason for sending him in person. Other moms don't trust the AP classes by Michigan. Virtual will be the same as Bloomfield teachers, and others will send their children very reluctantly only because their child is in marching band. Some of us can keep our kids home and reduce the in-person numbers for those who had to be there for other reasons. Kelly Tumia, part two of my comments. Please read entirely. Hi, my name is Kelly Tumia, emailing the board to have my voice heard regarding in-person learning. It is essential and vital. It is crucial to have our kids back at school this fall. I have a senior sophomore and a sixth grader who are all eager and more than willing to run back to school wearing masks and following social distancing protocols in place. My senior voice being stressed over the nervous for college for 2021 school year, and now she may not be prepared for school also. The benefits of sending kids to school outweigh the risks. Life cannot stop because we Life cannot stop because we, because of the coronavirus. We cannot harden our homes because of the virus. Parents in our district who are emailing and outraged about the in-person learning can simply keep their kids home, please. I feel my story needs to be told, so I'm adding to my comments I sent last night after I thought long and hard. My husband and daughter were infected with COVID in March. They were both the earliest cases of COVID-19. Please hear me out. They both are doing exceptionally well. My daughter did not suffer any respiratory symptoms. While we were sick, I wore a mask taking care of them. I never caught COVID and neither did the rest of my girls. Also, I am a nurse for 20 years and have a medical background and I'm confident in saying kids need to be back in school. The virus is mutating. We cannot sit inside our homes for months and months waiting for a vaccine. Take a look at the numbers of hospitalizations and deaths currently. We are at a daily low of five deaths on average and it, and it, and let's be serious, there's, that's even if the deaths counts are truly COVID deaths. Our deaths are fine. Our numbers are fine. Once again, the virus is mutating and people are not getting sick like they were in March at the very beginning of this. I've spoken firsthand to frontline COVID doctors, HF, Detroit, Providence, Novi, Southfield, Beaumont, and they have said our ICUs are basically empty, hardly any COVID, so why are we stopping life? Mask up, go to school and we can do this. The flu infects kids worse than the whole COVID thing. Consider that. We cannot deprive our children from a normal school setting. If parents can go back to work, then kids can go back to school. Parents in our district should not feel comfortable have the right and their right is simply opt out in-person learning and learn from home. Parents and children of our district who are comfortable and willing to go back should have that opportunity. Please consider what we are depriving our children from by keeping them home. It is unfair. Please allow in-person learning. Megan Jansen. And all teachers are tech savvy. Will the teachers who are selected to instruct virtual academy not only be experts in the field they are teaching, but also have advanced knowledge of the learning platforms that have some knowledge of tech trouble shooting and should truly be able to engage the students in a meaningful way? Professor Ken Jackson. Congratulations on the bond passing. The aging K-38 buildings in the district do not need, do need considerable repair. I hope future generation of kids can make good use of those facilities. Here is how you can help mine and I think others now. You are currently proposing a twofold school system, one in-person and one online. You have never done that before and it is unclear at what stage on August 6th you are in terms of preparation. This drains credible, this strains, um, credible. It is our collective wishful thinking that even allows us to consider that this is possible. I have been in academics for 30 years, higher ed, and I simply do not believe that when you suggest to community that you can double your capacity in this way. Your teachers are under strain, so is your staff. Unfortunately, this is going to worsen in the coming months. I understand and appreciate the many reasons to consider such as. Considerable and, and I can't see that, but to my mind, it is not possible, not even close. It is, it is a mirage. Harvard is not offering such an option. Arizona does, but they have been at it for 25 years. Urge you to use all consolidated, the resources you have, the resources you have been asked and received from me and other taxpayers to do things that are possible. One, prepare now for reasonable online learning. Two, help students like mine navigate the labyrinth of state requirements in existence for those that will emerge in the next year or two as educational institutions trying to preserve their legitimacy as credit, as credential granting agencies and for, for the many that still honestly try to help teach kids. Engage our full-time paid legislators working remotely to do something they can. Modify state requirements so we don't try to fit a square peg into a round COVID hole. None of this is your fault, none of it. Too much is being asked of you. Too much is being asked of Harvard, quite frankly. Act reasonably. This is the time to put communications and messaging and public posturing in front of what is realistic and in the best overall interest of students and teachers. Caroline. If your children are attending in-person learning and at some point need to quarantine 14 days, will they be able to access virtual learning for the two weeks when they are at home? Megan Cooper. My name is Megan Cooper and I'm the parent of fourth grader and two kindergartens, both repeating, both repeating the way elementary school. I'm writing for you today for two reasons. One, to thank you for your time, energy, effort, insight to what has been an extraordinary, challenging time. I'm sure for all these past seven months, I'm a school teacher by trade, having taught 16 years between the private and public sector, between general education and special education populations and between both very high and very low income school communities. I know better than many that you pass carving and decisions making ahead of you is not an easy one and I'm sure no matter what you do or how you do it, certain people will still be unhappy. Clearly on a global scale, now more than ever, we are so divided, isolated and vulnerable regarding whatever issue is at hand. Call the Irish Catholic in me, but I'm a very faith-based person and I do believe that we will persevere, we will recover and everything will be okay eventually. It's getting there and I, and no probably of all of you, causes me many sleepless nights. Please know that I'm not trying to overstep my bounds in this message, but there are not, but there are concerns and rumors and Facebook groups galore out there that are ramping up and circling the drains as the vote to pick an educational plan looms. I also know that as school openings approach, more and more districts are no longer considering any options other than a hundred percent virtual and on behalf of many, I am begging you, all of you, not to let the Bloomfield schools for the next district to fall online. And here is why I ask. Two of my children, both who are repeating kindergarten are on IPs and I mentioned between teacher absences, inherent learning, social, emotional, medical disabilities, transition issues, special education and servicing issues and the lack of completion in the school year have regressed so badly that I'm afraid what will happen to them in another school year through a computer is their only option, even for another day, let alone another three months to a full academic year. The fallout at home leads to challenging medications, increased therapy sessions, increased Zoom calls with doctors and somnien in many ways experience many of the same issues, but for completely different reasons, most of which I would tie solely back to lack of routine and socialization with her teacher and her peers. In short, our three months on this platform was catastrophic and devastating on many levels. I cannot imagine for another year of this, what would look like for my family, but in this case, mine especially. And I fundamentally believe we shouldn't have to. We have two options, many good options, so long as we're thinking outside the box. I'm sure you are working to consider all options, but please do not let caving to the pressure of the entire virtual platform be one of them. I am more than qualified to teach children with special needs and yet I felt miserably helping my own. Their supports, resources and allies were in brick and mortar buildings, not though, not through computer screens. I will tell you that legally speaking, their IPs are 504s, are not being followed as they were well-written, but they, but, but they did not learn. They did not feel successful in, in the end, in their worlds. They all hated school by the time June rolled around. I have never heard any of the children utter these words, except that the really tough days until school was shut down. The only thing more heartbreaking in hearing this was knowing how many other families were experiencing the same thing. I once worked at a state in the school district like Bloomfield Hills, catered to the high-end clientele, had a very large and supportive Board of Education and PTO and they went through a very sudden and costly restructuring program, the wake, the bonds they passed. Schools were consolidated, buildings were flipped, teachers were on carts, et cetera. I was teaching third grade at the time and I was moved to a trailer and made it work. It was hard and everyone was always adjusting, but we made it work because we did it together. It was temporary, it was chaotic, but we made it work because we were growing from the experience and the kids died because we made it work and we showed what could be done in an, in an unideal and unexpected circumstances, one of life's recurring lessons. They don't know any different for the most part. I cannot imagine trying to do what we did back from home. We got creative and we improved. We used our gyms, our cafeteria, our playground, our art room, our library to spread kids out, service, teach, learn and lead, and we all came out better for it. As I said, I, I do not know, I know your road ahead is not easy, but please give parents' choice. Do not take away what so many desperately need and want for our children. Don't deny our children and choices either. Many of them will tell you what they want to go back to school. Let's fight to make it happen and be the model for other districts and show how it can be done. We can do it safely, we can do it effectively, and I know we could be successful in the wake of uncertainty. I for one am gladly step up and step to what I can do to make this happen. Please do the right thing and leave the in-person as just that, an option. Lee Abel. First, I'd like to thank the board for your commitment to our students, for the incredible amount of energy and time you have dedicated to helping the plans for the school year. As the school year nears, I've become increasingly nervous about the in-person instruction option that BHHS is offering. Neighboring districts are sharing their plans and many of them are opting to begin the year all virtual. While I recognize that BHHS families who completed the surveys want in-person options, they filled out those surveys before the virus numbers were on the rise again and before they knew what surrounding districts were choosing. Do we really want to be the district that experiments on our students and staff while our neighbors stay home and stay safe? I would like to see our board and district revisit the possibility of providing all virtual instruction as opposed to offering a choice to families. Providing a choice puts undue pressure on families to place their children and families at risk for the benefit of more cost offerings at the high school level and socialization. I fully understand this is not a needed decision and appreciate what you are working to balance the desires of the community and the safety of the students and staff. Ultimately, I believe that the safety of our community should outweigh the families, say they, what families say they want. Lindsay. I'd like our kids to go to know their teachers and classmates, encourage teachers to have meet and greets while the weather is nice, perhaps outside picnic lunch. Next. Dear board, I hope this email finds everyone healthy. Thank you for your leadership and guidance through these very difficult, uncertain times for our community and thank you for your hard work on passing the school bond. With two little ones in school, we're excited that changes will come in the future. I wanted to give you the perspective of our family for the 2020-21 academic year and I'll keep it brief in consideration of everyone's time. We were a new family in Bloomfield and have a six-year-old boy and a four-year-old girl and honestly moved to Bloomfield only for the excellent schools and teachers. We both work full-time with full schedules, eight to nine hours schedules a day. The online learning in the spring was a complete disaster for my six-year-old. For a kid with ADHD challenges, trying to teach him a structural school schedule while we both worked, it was a failure to say the least. The struggle was real, choosing between earning a paycheck and our kids' education and emotional wellbeing. Most nights, we would start schoolwork after dinnertime and then there were tears, which hurt us most and we don't want him to have this kind of school experience on his very first experience in school. We want him to love schoolwork, reading, math and to be empowered to learn, grow and thrive. The truth is my son received no education at all because all those beautiful programs that the teachers put together were never implemented and that the brutal reality for two working parents in online school was for a kindergarten. We would click on the lessons and watch YouTube. He developed the screen addiction all, over a short period of time. Eventually, we had to remove all iPads from the house and try teaching with a paper pen. My son is already academically and socially emotionally behind. My fear is that we will have a second grader in age and a kindergarten level where he starts school next fall and Bloomfield decides to go all, to go virtual only. Keep in mind that all kids learn the same way and to assume all kids, that kids will all thrive in a virtual environment is a disadvantage to those kids that learn differently and don't catch on as easy as others. We looked into a micro school pod as Plan B and a home tutor as Plan C for this academic year, but found that it was, that the going rate for a teacher is $65 to $90 an hour. And let's face it, with the COVID economy or any economy, that's not affordable for families again, who are looking for educators, not babysitters. I understand that the issues at hand, safety is our first and utmost priority as well, but I have full confidence that Bloomfield will take precautions to follow the CDC guidelines and keeping our kids and all of us safe. And at the end of the day, we can, all that we can do is take the appropriate action steps and implement guidelines in schools, workplace and communities. So I'm asking you to consider and offer the option for safe face-to-face in-person instruction, at least for elementary school only, for families like us. That is what our children want, need. They need teachers to teach them. We need the in-person learning option to remain open for working parents and for our kids' mental health and education. Thank you for your time and efforts making Bloomfield the best district and a place we can go to school. Tina Paul East Hills. In order for parents to have a clear understanding of what is being taught, would it be possible to have teacher record their lessons? Kelly Newell. Greetings. I'm a parent of a third grader in Bloomfield Hills and a public school teacher in Farmington. As you work through the difficult process of determining the appropriate start of school in the midst of a pandemic, I would like to thank you for the countless hours you were putting for this decision. I am confident you are studying and taking note of what other districts in the county and around the state are doing. However, I still wanted to take this time to share the full remote learning and distance model that will be following in Farmington along with the rationale for it. I am overjoyed with the plan and fortunate to work in a district that's committed to the safest return possible for staff, students and their families. When Farmington was considering in-person instruction, they were already going to follow not only the required part of the governor's plan, but also the strongly recommended steps such as wearing masks in every part of the building K through 12. Even with those precautions in place, we still determined that a remote start was needed. As a parent of a child in Bloomfield Hills, I am uncomfortable with my child attending school while she would be wearing a mask to, where she would be wearing a mask to protect others. I would be requiring her as a mom, but they would not be required to wear one to protect her. I am concerned for the safety of my fellow teachers as well. If safety of all is truly number one priority, urge you to consider remote start for Bloomfield Hills schools. For me, this is what I want my child. I don't want to choose a virtual academy. I want my child taught with the teachers in our homeschool who know her, understand her learning style and for them to be able to do it in a way that's safe for everyone. This is the remote plan Farmington has, Farmington has decided on and would love nothing more than Bloomfield Hills to do the same. The details of the Farmington, Farmington plan were sent to the board members by me this morning and includes the rationale for the remote plan as well as the plan for provided childcare for parents who aren't able to be home with their children. With every district, while every district will need to do things in the way that works best for them, I hope it will be, give some things to consider for Bloomfield. Thank you for your time. Angela. My name is Angela. I am one of the co-chairs of the parent advisory committee representing Bloomfield Hills through Oakland schools. I have two daughters, a Koenig, third and fourth grade. My fourth grade daughter Claire with an IEP significantly regressed over the spring. For example, at the beginning of the school year, she was able to write five sentences, one prompt, not being able, with, with one prompt to not being able to write one sentence with multiple prompts by the end of the school year. It is evident that she needs the physical presence of a teacher provide her necessary support. Even my third grade daughter Nora with no learning disabilities found it tremendously challenging to work independently in front, in front of a computer over the spring. Like many families on our community, we, we are a dual working family. In addition, my husband and I are both essential workers. If the return to school plan were virtual or hybrid only, we do not have the luxury of working from home to support our elementary students with the virtual navigation, continued time management support. Moreover, as with other essential workers in our community, if we don't, if we don't, if we don't report, if we don't report to work, we lose our jobs. How will we pay our taxes for the new $200 million bond with no income? I tune into board meetings to listen to public comment. Teachers are afraid for their safety returned to the classrooms. While I respect their concerns, there are safety measures available, PPE that will minimize risks. All Americans, all have risks of COVID-19, healthcare workers, law enforcement, grocery store employees, childcare providers, automotive employees and teachers alike. As an advocate for the underprivileged student population in Bloomfield Hills, I feel that anything less than five days, five days a week in-person instruction is a disservice for all students, especially for students with disabilities who have a legal right to a free, appropriate public education guaranteed by the Individuals with Disabilities Act, IDEA and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. I want to applaud you for making the decision to open schools for in-person instruction with an alternative virtual instruction option. I beg you to stay the course so that Bloomfield Hills can continue to be a leading school district in our, in our country. Children miss out on essential academic and social emotional learning, formative relationships with peers and adults, opportunities to play and other developmental necessities when they are kept at home. Children living in poverty, children of color, English language learners, children with diagnosed disabilities and young children face especially severe losses. Until these children and physically, until these children physically return to full time, many will lose out on essential educational, social and developmental benefits. Neither the economy nor the healthcare system will be able to have full strength given parents, caretaker responsibilities and profound racial and social economic injustices to be further exacerbated. Harvard E D U. Um, yes, I saw some of my colleagues as I was reading. That's fine. So I saw Jennifer, you said first, Jennifer, do you want to take over from the top?
Um, sure. So I'm sorry for the skewed angle while I read. I'm, I'm looking at a bigger screen next to me that I, my older eyes can, can see better. So this is from Mikhail Reamer, School Attendance Area East Hills. On behalf of the eighth grade team at East Hills Middle School, we would like to thank Superintendent Watson, the Board of Education, Bloomfield Forward, and the generous community of Bloomfield Hill Schools for supporting our instruction and passing the bond through the election this past week. We are looking forward to new opportunities and advancing the educational experience we can provide for the students of Bloomfield Hills for years to come. Thank you, East Hills Middle School Eighth Grade Teachers. Donna Halsted. Please continue to have the two options as you decided at the last meeting. There is no perfect answer, but giving the district the two options is the best in our current situation. Letting every family decide on their own comfort level. Many local summer camps were able to run with no COVID cases. They were able to do that following the strict rules of social distancing. Let Bloomfield at least attempt the social distancing in person. Please plan for both options, then if we are unable to do in person because of executive orders, we are ready. Val Berneki. Good evening and congratulations to all on the passage of the bond. Thank you for the diligent work in planning for our district's future. As a BHS teacher of 30 years and a parent who lives in the community, I am interested to learn about your recent tours of elementary classroom facilities. Did you discover anything more about safety for students and teachers? I am especially interested in learning more about the safety for those of us who are in K-5 educators and will be isolated in classrooms for five-plus hours with students who will be maskless. Specifically, by September 8th, will we have proper ventilation systems for students and educators in our older buildings? Will all district classrooms have at least three feet of separation for our students? Will K-5 learners be given and required to work and learn behind plexiglass cubbies? As more and more school districts around us change to beginning the school year in a 100% remote fashion, I wonder if we as a community need to change course as well. I suggest we shift efforts to a remote learning start for all learners in BHS. Bringing all learners together under one plan could offer a more graduated reentry for staff and students, keeping them safe. It would also allow us to provide social emotional opportunities like fall sports and clubs outdoors as we could monitor COVID cases in these small cohorts. Respectfully, safety should be paramount for all children, families, and BHS educators during these unprecedented times in our community. Fondly Val Berneki, fourth grade teacher at Way. Next, next is Julie Frank. To the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education and Community, thank you for taking the time to read my letter and concerns. As a proud graduate of Bloomfield Hill Schools, I've always been proud of my educational roots. I strongly believe I was surrounded by some of the best and brightest peers who thrive due to our strong community support and with the encouragement of outstanding teachers. In fact, my educational experience led me to a career as a school psychologist for the past 20 years. My youngest son will be a junior at BHHS this fall. Our family made the difficult decision eight years ago to move from a neighboring district back to my home of BHS by becoming a tuition-paying family. We made this change a great sacrifice to our family, knowing that it would be what was best for our two sons. The sacrifices have not just been financial. We support our children with the financial commitment by paying tuition, but we support our children by driving them, sometimes great distances, by becoming involved parents in the boosters, PTO, and whatever way possible. I share all of this with you to give you some context to the angst we are going through now as we have no good decisions ahead of ourselves. I am extraordinarily concerned with face-to-face options presented. While your plan may comply with the state's most basic requirements, I have not heard anything that seems to satisfy the concerns around true adequate social distancing, crowded classrooms, poorly ventilated spaces, passing time at the secondary level, cleaning and disinfecting spaces, eating lunches in a safe and distanced manner, just to name a few. My wish is that the board reconsider their endorsement of this plan. While Michigan currently has done a far better job managing the far-reaching effects of the virus than some states, we are not in a safe position to put thousands of people in close quarters. I beg of you to take a proactive approach instead of a reactive one. The virus is still very much present and spreading. The state of Michigan will reverse course and see a second wave of COVID-19 if we fully open our buildings and are not more patient. As aforementioned, our family chooses BHS because we expect the district to lead the state and we demand better for our students and staff. We expect, expect Bloomfield Hills to stand up and admit if they, if the necessary precautions are unable to be adequately met. If the in-person plans remain where they are right now, the district has not left our family with an option for virtual learning that allows our son to pursue the courses he needs in order to maintain his passions and competitive course load as he nears the time to put forth college applications. If our choice is virtual, he would not be able to access multiple AP, IB, or honors courses. These are some of the many reasons we chose to move to our children to Bloomfield Hills. This does not offer us a choice for our son's education despite our deep reservations with sending him in person. I ask each board member, are you planning on sending your school-aged children in person or to the newly created virtual academy? I hope and expect that if you are voting for endorsing this in-person plan, that you are fully confident in its safety measures and are looking forward to sending your children face-to-face. Are you willing to be a permanent guest teacher in, in these face-to-face options? If you are planning on choosing the virtual academy, then how will you be voting in favor of this face-to-face plan? As a medical health practitioner, I am keenly aware of the social and emotional implications of keeping our children in distance learning. I want, just like all parents, to get our children back to school and back to normal. I also know, I also know enough to know that we are in the middle of a global pandemic. There is no back to normal right now. Face-to-face instruction will not look like it did last March. The normal is gone for now. There is no pleasing everyone in the community. There is, however, a way to keep our community safe and healthy. Please follow the science and keep our staff and students safe. Opening our school doors now will undoubtedly only fuel the fire and result in repeated closures. The short-term pain for a long-term gain of keeping our doors open should be the goal. Many Michigan districts have already chosen to go fully online for the start of the school year, providing their staff an opportunity to properly prepare for a full-time online learning environment. There is a high likelihood that the district will have to go to a full-time online environment when there is a significant outbreak. Instead of having staff scramble to make the switch, the district should be preparing now and offer a full online program that includes all course offerings that were available to its students when they registered last year. I thank you for your hard work and dedication, and I will pass this on to the next reader. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's me. Is this Lisa Butler?
Yep.
Okay. I believe our children need to be back in school for many reasons, and Bloomfield Hills should stand firm with their choice to offer families either in school or online learning. The first reason I believe is that we should offer school learning is the science. CDC Director Robert Redfield has stated that the data shows that the flu in healthy children is some five to 10 times more deadly, adding that the odds of a child dying a COVID-linked death is one in a million. He shows evidence of this by explaining that when we look at right now, the mortality of the particular COVID virus in the almost 218,000 people we looked at at February to July, there was 52 individuals under the age of 18 and about 35 were actual school age. Some of them were younger than school age. Further, he states that's important because what it means actually is the risk per 100,000 and is about point one for 100,000. So another way to say that it's one in a million. Our kids will actually have risk every, my, will actually have risk every day. There is no way to ever get to 0% risk that nothing will happen. Clearly, we have children in our district with comal, como abilities, and that is why it is so wonderful that you can also offer online learning for those at high risk. Further, as we worry about our teachers being exposed to this virus today, there has been no link to any teacher being infected by a student anywhere in the world. We have many people back to work in our country, including myself, who will always run the risk of exposure by those around them. If we live in such fear of exposure, then no one could ever go to any public place. If everyone follows the mandatory mask-wearing and social distancing guidelines that we are being ordered to do, then our risk and child morbidity would even be lower than the numbers stated above. The second reason I believe that we should offer school learning is the psychological problems that this outbreak has caused in children. In USA, we have seen the major increase in suicide rates, depression, obesity, sadness, drug and alcohol abuse, and children stuck in unsafe homes, et cetera. According to Redfield, when discussing high school-aged children, we are, we are, sorry, behind this pin here. We are, could you move it up a bit? Yeah, we are seeing sadly, we, we are seeing sadly far greater suicides now than we are deaths from COVID. We're seeing far greater deaths from the drug overdose than our above excess. Then we are seeing the deaths from COVID. This is a major problem. Our youth are witnessing a world of fear. We are the last group of people that get to return to some type of normalcy by going to school. Our children need in-person education. We cannot remove our children from normalcy over a fear of a virus that has proven to be less deadly and less contagious than originally reported. The final reason that I think our children needed to go back to school is for socialization. Our kids' school-age years are some of the most impressional and create lasting memories. Lasting friendship, interaction with teachers, team sports, school organized clubs, groups, and schools-run events, hands-on learning center, all extremely important. It is not a secret that the humans are social beings and we need to be interacting with others. When our kids lose this opportunity to be with others, they do not have the chance to evolve socially to the best of their ability. I would like to further share with you that over 40 pediatricians in the Northfield School District signed a petition regarding all these issues, and sadly, their district did not even acknowledge this. Dr. Melissa Heinan, a pediatrician and epidemiologist, who is also in Norfolk, discusses that the risk of COVID is like a risk for a car accident. We know there is risk, yet every day, every single one of us gets in our cars with our kids and takes that risk with careful measures like wearing our seatbelts and obeying the speed limit. We take the risk even though we could die. We have learned it's important, take careful measures, and figure out ways to live around the risk. The real risk is these children not going to school. The amount of sadness, depression, obesity, lack of pandemic academic motivation, decreased social interactions, child abuse, yes, in Northfield, and suicides is making me lose sleep for these children more than COVID currently since we are at phase four. Kids I see every day are affected in ways where in the long term, I firmly believe that this is going to hurt them more than COVID. She does further state that the risk is higher for special populations, which is why it's important that our district offers online solutions for this group. She stated.
At five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Next one. Emily Ikenhart. I am concerned that the information emailed to the district residents last week regarding the virtual academy option was so difficult to understand that many families will inaccurately conclude that the only way for their high school students to be able to take the courses they originally requested last spring and which are offered through the high school course catalog would be to attend school in person. It seems almost as if the materials were written to purposely obfuscate so that families would lean towards it in-person attendance. The result could very well be that the virtual academy enrollment would be artificially suppressed, leading to classes being removed from the virtual academy catalog because of low enrollment. When, if families had a clear understanding of the full catalog of VA class options, they would in fact opt for their children to attend online, leading to sufficient enrollment numbers such as that full catalog of classes would be run. I know that the board and administration has been working very hard and thinking very hard about all of this, and I would hate to learn that the materials were intentionally complicated so as to drive a particular outcome like higher in-person enrollment. Okay, Lisa, go ahead.
Actually, um, we're gonna, one of our interns, Johnaki.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, from Lydia Farah. I hope the board will reconsider their decision to open school in person next month in light of the current level of COVID spread in our community. The fact that teenagers were recently implicated in a large spike in cases in our area and the fact that we cannot adequately distance students in our buildings if more than half of them come back for in-person learning. According to Harvard, the Harvard Global Health Institute, a community is considered on track for containment when the average, when they average less than one case per 100,000 people on a seven-day rolling average. In Oakland County, we currently have 8.5 cases per 100,000, so we are considered to have community spread. We are not far, very far from having what is considered accelerating spread, which starts at 10 cases per 100,000. Even if we do not go all virtual instruction for the year, it may be prudent to consider pushing back the start date for in-person instruction as nearby Rochester Hills recently did to October 1st to give more time for our current levels to go down. Many defend the decision to let children go back to school because they are not as likely to transmit the disease, but according to recent studies, that is debatable. In addition, teens, 15 to 19-year-olds, were implicated in a spike of COVID cases connected to graduation parties in Fenton and South Lion held two weeks ago. Not only did a teen admit to going to a party while knowing he was positive, many of the families who hosted the event are not cooperating with contact tracing professionals trying to keep, do their job to protect the broader community from spread. I fear that the spread from students is inevitable because they, um, because they can transmit the illness and parents will not keep asymptomatic children who test positive home, or they will not alert others when they get a positive result for fear of shaming. Although we cannot change human behavior, if there is less community transmission, there is less of a chance that individual decisions like these could lead to accelerating spread or spike in cases. Lastly, I am concerned that we are rushing back to buildings that were already overcrowded in some parts of the district without knowing how many families are going virtual. Many of the parents I've spoken to with high schoolers are planning on sending them back in person because their student wants to take classes that aren't offered virtually or because they assume that the state will shut down schools within a month anyways. Based on my informal sampling, we could have close to 75% of high schoolers in person in the building. How can adequate physical distancing be achieved under this scenario? Likewise, buildings like Eastover are already crowded in normal times, something the board acknowledged when it indicated the need to redraw catchment zones for the schools last year. How will distancing be adequate if more than 50% of students return? The all-or-nothing plan seems to ignore this or assume that we can magically get 50% of students to stay home. I understand this is a no-win situation that we face. There are no perfect options. I have not even mentioned the risk to adults in our building or the buses or the shortage of substitute teachers. But I think the health and welfare of our students, teachers, and broader community needs to be placed at the forefront of this decision. Delaying the start of in-person instruction may give the community the time to reduce COVID-19 spread and/or the board time to develop a plan to ensure lower in-person enrollment. Just barreling ahead with the current plan in light of the current community spread levels, what we know about teens spreading the illness and overcrowding in some of our buildings does not seem like a good decision at the time. Thank you.
Um, Paul, do you want to take Scott's?
Sure. Uh, Scott Richmond. I appreciate BHS giving parents and families the opportunity to decide what's best for our particular family by offering both the in-person schooling option and virtual option. Some school districts are wrongfully, in my opinion, taking away that ability for families to decide for themselves what option suits them best. Shame on those school districts. Dual-working parent and a single-working parent household should not be forced to decide between working to pay the bills and educating their children. The in-person schooling is necessary for those of us who work and cannot be there to oversee the virtual education process. Thank you for understanding this and giving us and respecting us to make that choice.
You can take the next one, Paul.
Okay. Um, Renew Zaretzky. To the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education and Superintendent Watson, I served as a parent member of the Bl, of the Blended Learning Task Force in June, and I cannot imagine being in your shoes right now, nor the shoes of any employee of the district. During this pandemic, you have an impossible task, an impossible deadline, and you're trying to meet it with insufficient resources and confusing guidance. By providing families a choice between face-to-face instruction and all virtual and rejecting hybrid models of instruction, I understand and deeply appreciate your efforts to meet the needs of everybody, families and staff. But by ceding the choice between face-to-face or virtual instruction to families, the district is dividing the community into two. It seems a strange and sad thing to do, especially after the success of passing a $200 million bond initiative designed to strengthen Bloomfield Hill Schools as it charts its path, its path forward in an uncertain pandemic-driven future. By ceding the choice to parents and guardians, the district is missing opportunities to lead a united community and offer safer in-person instruction than currently promised. What if too many families choose face-to-face instruction? The academic year in buildings will already look and feel different to all involved. But if too many choose the option and a physical distance and other safety measures weaken or fail, classes will cease from time to time. Can the district offer equal education to students enduring such disruptions? Can the district offer equal education to students enduring such disruptions compared to those enrolled in Bloomfield Virtual? What if too few families choose Bloomfield Virtual? Can the district offer equal education to high school students who may have non-BHS teachers for key courses compared to students enrolled in face-to-face instruction by BHS teachers? What if our region moves to phase three on September twenty-first or October fifteenth? The time spent developing a Bloomfield Virtual plan and a face-to-face that can nimbly move to remote plan would be a profound loss. Rather than waiting for the state to put our region in phase three, why not assume we're already there? Has the district considered a staged over time return to face-to-face instruction? In such a scenario, the district could make use of the planning it's already done. Every student could take remotely the fall twenty-twenty classes they chose in the spring, perhaps for one marking period at a time. Perhaps a district could move to the currently two-option face-to-face Bloomfield Virtual plan when other neighboring or nearby school districts make the comparable moves. This could give the district the ability to reduce its potential coronavirus impact in the larger community, one that includes schools with broader, uh, all virtual plans. This could give the district time to see how the, uh, the novel coronavirus behaves during the upcoming flu season and while people spend increasing time indoors and time to assure that face-to-face instruction is fully staffed and as safe as possible. This could still give students the opportunity to participate in other in-person endeavors. These perhaps include fall sports, clubs, or extracurriculars with established cohorts. Perhaps students with five oh fours or IEPs could be served through face-to-face learning support sessions or other work groups. Perhaps participation for any of these cohorts could be more eas- could more easily be facilitated either outdoors or indoors under fully masked, sanitized, physically distanced, and appropriately ventilated conditions. If the district has already considered and rejected some sort of staged return, could it please explain why? If the district has not considered such a plan, could it please explain why or why not, or please explain why not? Thank you for your time and efforts and for reading through yet one more opinion. Renew Zaretzky, proud Bloomfield Hills Schools parent of two students.
Lisa?
Um, don't we have any more interns in this meeting?
No more, just, just the two. We can go back to them, Lisa, after you, you know.
I can. Um, it's here, the problem is it's just kind of small, so the type, and it's smaller on my second device sitting next to me, so just bear with me. Um, okay. Dear board members and administrators, I appreciate your ongoing commitment to develop a plan during this incredibly difficult time while tried, while you try to appease everyone. I hope that you will read all of the comments you received tonight to fully comprehend where the community stands based on what you have been told. I feel compelled to write because it seems as if the majority of people are not seeing the big picture and just want their kids back in school. People are thinking with their hearts, not their heads. The bottom line is we need to rely on science to get back to school safely. I find it disconcerting that the district thinks it's acceptable to space kids only three feet apart indoors when we've been told to stay a minimum of six feet apart out, even outdoors, which is much safer since March. I don't understand how teachers are expected to work unma- with unmasked children at the lower levels if it places them at, at great risk. We have to be masked whenever we go out publicly, so it should be no different. That's not plausible. It should be rejected. I also think it's inappropriate to ask middle school elective teachers with master's degrees to act as substitutes if necessary for academic teachers that may be stuck home with illness and provide pre-recorded lessons as a replacement for the synchronous learning of their own arts classes since there will be a shortage of subs. In addition, the current arts offering listed in the virtual course guide for BHS are bare bones. This district has always been an enormous proponent of the arts, and this proposal sounds like it comes from a district that doesn't even value the arts or livelihoods of its arts teachers. It's bothersome that the HVAC systems haven't been publicly discussed. And if additions or upgrades have taken place as they have in other districts and private schools in our area, proper ventilation is of utmost importance right now. I think it is downright dangerous that unlike many of the surrounding districts that have chosen to go a hundred percent virtual, BHS is allows, is allowing everyone to return to school full-time all at once. This simply is unsafe. I can't imagine high school kids traveling to their classes without socializing. What if teachers re- retire unexpectedly right before school starts? How does this, how would this be handled? This needs to be addressed. I fear, I fear this will backfire. I have a high-risk child with respiratory and pulmonary issues. My other child desires to take multiple specialty honors classes, some of which are only available in person. I don't feel it's fair or equitable to make a cho- a child choose between education and our family's safety and potentially bring home this virus to a sibling. Imagine being the parent of a child infected with a virus that could potentially affect the rest of his or her life or worse, yeah, take a life. So that child's siblings could not take classes needed to remain competitive for college. This should not be a choice we have to make. Given the challenges, I think it's important that BHS take a moment to consider the importance of health and safety of the community instead of focusing on the top, on being the top district in the state and always leading the way. If lives are lost due to these decisions, is BHS willing to accept responsibility? How do you think kids will cope if their siblings or classmates die? Think about how many, how many cases we have to have in the state of Michigan by going back to school in person and how back, and how far back this will set us. We haven't been to school in six months. The cases will undoubtedly go up and perhaps snowball once in re- once we return. We need to think about long-term consequences, not just the for now. I urge you to consider focusing on the robust virtual plan you promised and only this, even if it's short-term. We don't have the time or resources to concentrate on both programs safely and the standards that we are accustomed to. No one will have to live with the, no one will have to live with the guilt of spreading a virus because as a district, we jumped the gun and tried to go back too early. We can start virtually and return to schoo- to school when it is safe. I thank you kindly for your, for these thoughts.
Okay, I will finish these off with the interns who will rotate. Um, Sarah, hello, thank you for the opportunity to share my comment. At yesterday's meeting discussing the plans for special education, information was shared about PPE provided by the district for special education teachers. Regarding masks, images were shared which included two options, special education, the DHHS, DHHS teachers will be given, a mask with a clear panel and a shield with a lower cloth covering. I ask the board and district to strongly consider providing these two options for all teachers in the district, also providing the current masks that have been purchased if a teacher feels more comfortable with that option. Education can and should be provided to the teachers to help them choose. Of course, children requiring special education DHHS services deserve and require the benefit of seeing their teachers' faces, lips, and facial expressions. This is essential to their learning and could be considered inequitable without these options. I'd argue that not providing the same masks and our shields to the general education teachers spec- specifically K through five is also inequitable to those students they serve. These young children, especially K through two, require the opportunity to read facial expressions and social cues to teach appropriate social and pragmatic skills. Additionally, the necessarily, the necesset- necesses- necessity, the this, um, the necessity to see lip movements to beneficial to learning phonics and literacy skills. For those who are unaware, a sound signal, um, uh, reduces to six, to six dB decibels every time the sources to the listener's distance is doubled. This means that there is a casual effect of a lower speed signal that further you from the speaker. It makes sense. When physical distancing in the classroom and desks, and desks are spaced in rows, the children are backed to a greater disadvantage when hearing what the teacher is saying. This is not a variable, a variable that the district will, is, will or is able to alter in phase four, special desks three to six feet. Putting a closed mask on a teacher as well as a plastic partition in front of each student creates an even greater disadvantage to hearing the lesson. Providing the general education teachers with the same equipment as a special education teachers at least will allow all students to take advantage of lip reading and seeing facial features, which is inevitable in the social, emotional development and education. I ask the board and district to strongly consider this and provide the same PPE to all teachers in the district to ensure equity with this matter. Thank you for your time and consideration. Dr. Amy Goodman. My medical two cents, based on treating COVID patients in ICU and outpatient, running a practice, implementing COVID procedures and protocols, being on call for family, friends, and BHS staff volunteering at Marching Van Camp and doing two to six hours of COVID research a day since March. One, some students, staff, and families will get COVID. Some may get sick, some may have severe health consequences. Two, in-person learning will fall horribly within the first two weeks of school opening because of COVID positive cases forcing closure. Three, teachers, staff, students, families will not be mentally, academically, financially, logistically prepared for distance learning. Four, parents will blame the district administration and the school board even though they were the ones who pushed for in-person learning. Five, virtual learning will be upset if they do not have the same educational opportunities as distant learning and no opportunity to expand their class choices. They will blame the district and board. Denise Ullam. Good evening. Thank you for your time and efforts. I'm writing to gain clarification regarding the IB course offering for BHS for the virtual academy option. It is my understanding that the IB program will only allow high schools to offer IB virtual classes if the entire school is being conducted virtually. Can you please provide clarification on this topic on the blue, blueprint website? If this is indeed the case, please consider the inequity that creates for those high school students who may want to opt for virtual learning if a district proceeds with the dual face-to-face and virtue, and virtual academy options, but also wants to maintain their IB course selections from the spring. Thank you for your consideration, Denise Ullam. Andrea. If a child's, if a child's family member is waiting for the outcome of a COVID test and ends up positive, will the child be required to quarantine for the first, for the first time waiting for the test result? And then for two weeks after the infected family member no longer shows symptoms? This could take two to six weeks. How will a student be learning during that time? Andrea. My concern is that students attending school face-to-face will be in buildings with forced error which will increase student risk of infection, even if they are kept in small groups. Hence, all of the community restrictions and on indoor spaces. Has this been considered and has there been any discussion, discussion having air systems at the school evaluated? It is important that we acknowledge there is some quantifiable risk with each safety precaution such as masks and distancing. They are not absolute and the circulating air can disperse respiratory droplets and, and aerosols. Thank you. Teresa. I would love to see our kids go back full-time. Unfortunately, I do not see, will, see that real- realistically happening in the fall with all obstacles to consider. I do not understand why there is not a hybrid plan on the table that is in discussion. As a mother of four, I can tell you, high schools' kids do not need to be in school seven hours on a normal day. There's a lot of wasted in school. My kids could get through the school day with one-fourth less instruction time easily. I understand that time is mandated by the state, but maybe it's time we relooked at that. Maybe this year we should be evaluating if kids need to fulfill electives. With West Bloomfield High School going completely online and Birmingham having a hybrid schedule, hybrid schedule, it is interesting that Bloomfield does not have a hybrid on the table at all. I understand that community's input wants to go back full-time or have virtual options with no hybrid selection. We need to relook at this at least for the fall. Otherwise, I feel like we are setting ourselves up to go right to online immediately. The virtual online program seems unhealthy and unrealistic to have a student on the computer that much. Has there been any data on how this is going to affect our kids? Need a plan that can keep our kids in as much as possible and off the computer. I believe a hybrid option for the fall is more realistic, though I do feel comfortable saying my child back. I do feel comfortable sending my child back full-time. If for some reason I do go online for the, for the fall kids for ages, should be able to print packets, especially younger kids, to keep them off the computer as much as possible. I know this is an issue as we are a green school, but it seems the health of our kids is a little bit more important. I'll read this one, then I'll go to the interns. Ann Chen, dear esteemed board members. I'm writing because I am deeply concerned for the safety of the students and community under your proposed return to school plan. My background qualification to offer best practices from a medical safety standpoint includes chief of the, chief of division of infectious disease for ten years at Henry Ford West Bloomfield Hospital, followed by my current role as chief of medicine. My extensive medical training in infectious disease helps qualify me to be one of a small number of experts who have substantial training in infection control and the prevention of spread of COVID. I do not speak for Henry Ford Hospital, but I am confident to tell you the views are shared by all infectious disease experts across the country. Speaking from my ex, experience the past several months during the COVID pandemic, preventing the spread of COVID with large groups of people is difficult and extensive safety measures are required, much more than what is suggested for schools. I would urge the school board to prioritize the safety of our students first. I would eagerly support an in-person return to school plan, but only if the school district could respect the following current best safety practices during phase four of COVID. I am highly alarmed, alarmed by the current local proposed plan that suggests students can be spaced as little as three feet apart in our classrooms. Equally important to requiring all students to wear a mask correctly a hundred percent of the time would be the need to remain at least six feet apart in the classrooms. Whenever there is a student with suspected COVID, every contact within six feet will put, will put at, every contact within six feet will be put at tremendous risk. The CDC definition of high-risk COVID exposure is defined as a contact within six feet for fifteen minutes with someone with six, with someone with suspected COVID. The six-foot recommendation is at a minimum standard of care based on science of transmit, transmission. All CDC guidelines, including all indoor settings, but especially in return, the school guidelines recommend this minimum standard. Governor Whitmer's plan not only recommends the six-foot rule in and out of classrooms, she strongly recommends the minimum distance. Every infectious disease expert endorses this standard, more especially in large indoor gatherings of more than a couple of people. I hope Bloomfield Schools can offer a safe return to school plan by following all the highly recommended, recommended and suggested measures to minimize risk. Offering a full five-day in-school plan to families that violates these state and national standards of six-foot distancing, especially when considered a large number of students involved in an indoor setting, is a dangerous and unjustifiable risk. These, there should be nothing more important than the safety of our students in our community. It is my hope that the Bloomfield School District would not only follow the suggested safety recommendations, including six-foot distancing, but work to do more and exceed all recommended standards. I would never have imagined that the Bloomfield Schools would be one of those districts to disregard the highly recommended six-foot safety standards, especially when Oakland County has some of the highest COVID rates in the entire state. I know our entire district is depending on your expert leadership to put forward a reasonable and safe plan for our students. As the current pandemic and space restraint, as the current pandemic and space restraints prevent a hundred percent return to school full-time, I would suggest a consideration of a hybrid model to help balance the crucial needs for social interactions with student safety. Considering to suggest a full-time to school option is reckless and realistic. Endorsing the plan would directly lead to increased outbreaks of COVID in our community, leading to the spread of COVID to our families and loved ones, increased hospitalizations, and even potential deaths. Almost all school safety systems are following the, are almost all, almost all, uh, almost all area school systems are following all recommended safety recommendations. Most has even given up a hybrid system and are moving to a hundred percent virtual as they have assessed the risk is too great this time to attempt even a hybrid. I only ask that we be reasonable about our plans. A hybrid plan that follows all suggested safety measures could be considered. Please do not continue to put forth a plan that disregards safety precautions and allows students full-time return to classrooms. Let us be leaders, not outliers, and best practices in safety during the COVID, COVID pandemic. I entrust your guidance to help support our students and community and recognize the suggested options for our students while there's still time to correct our course respectfully, Ann Chen M. Day.
Paul, that is done for this first round. Yeah, just for this first round, we've got a second round that would be ready and getting prepared.
Okay, well, Johniki, well, if they stick around, uh, the interns, um, they could, they could kick off the second round. With that, um, we will go to the study session, um, post-bond update. Um, I gave my speech earlier, I moved that up. So Pat, unless you want to say something about the bond, you can go to the return to school update.
Yeah, just briefly, President Coleman, thank you. Just want to thank the community for passing the bond. Um, unbelievable, great day. And the real winners at the end of the day are going to be our students and what they have to look forward to in the future. Uh, so let me pull up our presentation for this evening.
Pat, can I just say one thing? Um, I just want to make it clear because, you know, a lot of people probably watching. So public comment is really just a time for public to express their thoughts and opinions. Unfortunately, we as a board, it's not a dialogue. We can't answer the questions. But what we are going to be doing is accumulating all the public comment and everyone, we have your contact details. So either myself or Superintendent Watson, one of us will be getting back to each and every one of you on your concerns. So I just wanted to go through that, Pat, before you go to the back to school plan.
Thank you, President Coleman. So kind of like we've done in the past couple of meetings, today will be an update. We have a ton more information that we've been able to put together and gather as far as returning to teaching and learning for the school year for the 2020-2021 school year. A couple of things, because I'm still getting lots of questions about, as we prepare, what are we looking at? One thing I think we need to be upfront about is that we cannot guarantee zero risk. That any plan that we move forward that involve having students in the building obviously comes with some risk. We're also trying to focus on best safe practice as opposed to best practice. So traditionally, we're always talking about what is the best practice when it comes to teaching? Now we're trying to look at it through the lens of what is the best safe practice? There'll still be a lot of unanswered questions tonight that we're still working through. And so I think it's important to understand that we continue, that everyone knows we're continuing to work on our plans and will continue to provide information as it becomes available. So part one, part one is going to cover not our instructional model, but what needs to be approved by the Board of Education tonight. What needs to be approved by the Board of Education tonight is the safety plans we have in place based on the governor's roadmap to return to school. So we've put together our preparedness and response plan, which requires submission to Oakland Schools by August 17 of 2020. The governor's road plan outlines what we needed to cover. And so the first part of our presentation is going to be the safety measures that we've put in place in order to meet the criteria laid out by the governor of Michigan. So hygiene, under the required parts of the plan for hygiene, we know we need to make sure we provide adequate supplies to support healthy hygiene behaviors. So hand sanitizer, Brian Goby, his team, Tina Casa have been working on getting stuff we need for hygiene non-stop. You know, we need to teach reinforced hand washing with soap and water for a minimum of 60 seconds. And then under strongly recommended, we also know we need to educate staff and students on how to cough and sneeze into their elbows or cover with a tissue. That used tissue should be thrown in the trash. The hands wash immediately using proper hand hygiene techniques. That we need to systematically and frequently check and refill soap and hand sanitizers. We need to limit the sharing of personal items and supplies such as writing utensils. But we need to keep students' personal items separated in individual labeled cubbies, containers or lockers. And to limit the use of materials to small groups and disinfect between use or provide adequate supplies to assign for each individual student's use. We've talked about prior three stages of cleaning. So level three, no threat, low risk. Level two, known threat, medium risk, and level one, an outbreak or high risk. Some of the key points of outbreak in what we're going to focus on, which are touch points wiped and sanitized frequently, all bathrooms thoroughly cleaned, sanitized and power washed daily, nightly use of Clorox 360 electrostatic sprayer in possibly contaminated classrooms and also may be used on the whole school. In transportation, the sanitation, the entire fleet using the Victory Electrostatic Backpack Sprayer. So the work required, we're at a level three, will be significantly more laborious and time-consuming. So we're planning on overtime and additional staffing that will be required and coordinated between the district and a viral clean. And a viral clean is our third-party vendor. When we look at athletics, so we're talking about the Michigan High School Athletic Association and Bloomfield Hill Schools cross-country, and this is as of early this morning. I don't know if there's been any updates today. Cross-country, girls golf, boys tennis, and girls swimming and diving can begin practice on August 12. And they can begin their competitions, their traditional start dates of August 19th and 21st. Football, girls volleyball and boys soccer may begin practice, but no competitions are allowed to take place at this point. Practice for boys soccer and girls volleyball can begin on August 12. Football will delay the start of practice with full pads and equipment until August 17. Ball sports scrimmages are canceled for this school year and as for all ball sports. On August 20th, updated timelines for competition for football, girls volleyball and boys soccer will be released. Don't be surprised if guidance comes out before that. And the start of volleyball and swimming and diving practices are a part contingent on reopening of indoor facilities. Those sports may begin their practices outdoors, if not allowed to be indoors by August 12. And I know talking to some area athletic directors, the expectation is all swim will need to start outside. They will not be allowed to go inside on August 12. So looking at self-screening and our self-screening plan. So talking about the CDC identifies symptoms. So people with COVID-19 have had a wide range of symptoms reported, ranging from mild symptoms to severe illness. Symptoms may appear, symptoms may appear two to 14 days after exposure. Some of them include fever or chills, cough, shortness of breath or difficulty breathing, fatigue, muscle or body aches, headache, new loss of taste or smell, a sore throat, congestion or runny nose, that might feel nauseous or be vomiting, diarrhea. Keep in mind, this list does not include all possible symptoms. CDC will continue to update this list as we learn more about COVID-19. And as we get more from the CDC, our new health wellness director will update all of our plans with that. So our goal is to have everyone self-screen, self-screen in the morning before they arrive to school. So a couple of different ways to do it at home each day, be it desktop or laptop, a tablet or mobile device. But we know that's not practical for everyone. So a paper version will be available for those without device access. So if you do have a device upon arriving at school, you'll need to show your device, whether it's the desktop, oh, sorry, whether it's a tablet or your mobile device or an iPad that shows yes, green screen, you're approved to enter the building. Or stop, do not enter the building, you're not allowed to. Again, for some parents, that really wouldn't be an option depending on the age of their children. So a paper version would be available as well. Each building will have a remote and secluded room, an isolation room as part of the governor's plan. No smaller than 100 square feet to serve as an isolation area. This room will be outfitted with appropriate face shields, masks, gloves and sanitizing wipes. Each building in the district would have this isolation room. So testing and contact tracing. So in partnership with the Bloomfield Schools and Director of Health Wellness, this information actually comes from Kent County Health Department. And it kind of goes over how we would go about contact tracing. So a student or, you know, staff person has tested positive for COVID-19. School alerts in what would be Kent County would be the Oakland County Health Department about the COVID-19 positive case. And then school alerts families to provide in general communication about COVID-19 positive use while protecting the identity of the person who is infected. School then would continue on with the protocols there. But looking over the blue, it kind of tells you how the additional protocols and the flow chart work. So we know as part of the plan, not only what our health and wellness director, but the two nurses we're getting from Oakland Schools need to be part of the school portion of contact tracing. We also know we would need to train anywhere from three to six, if not more individuals, to be part of contact tracing based on the number of students we currently have in our school district. Transportation, students will be required to wear a mask or face covering. All students will be in assigned seats. So as students enter the bus, they need to have on their face mask. If for some reason they were in a hurry and ran out the door without a face mask, one will be provided. And they all need to use hand sanitizer on the bus. So the buses will carry hand sanitizer and a backup as well in case they run out. Food service, no visitors for lunch. Adjustments are in the works for serving lines. Students will be eating in the classroom in that is K through five, six through eight and nine through 12. The plan is still being developed for those groups. Extra time between lunches for additional cleaning and lunch orders placed a day before in the morning or as far as a week in advance. So that's if you want the school lunch, you instead of coming to school and deciding, well, today I'm going to buy and then today, the next day I'm going to pack. That decision will need to be done in advance, most likely a week in advance so they can be prepared. So some of the different student scenarios are the plan. So scenario one, student has no symptoms and has tested positive for COVID-19. Student response, the student shall remain at home and away from others and monitor symptoms. If the student remains symptom-free, they may return to school 10 days after they were tested. If during the 10 days, the student becomes symptomatic, then they must continue to stay home until all the following apply. One, not had a fever of 100.4 or above for 24 hours without the use of fever-reducing medications. Their other symptoms have improved. It's been at least 10 days since their symptom onset. The class response, from Bloom in the fifth grade, the class moves to remote learning for 14 days. Grade six or above, the COVID-19 task force will investigate and make a recommendation. All other close contacts will quarantine for 14 days to see if symptoms develop. If symptoms develop, then one, you'll need to call the doctor, two, ask to get tested, three, follow their instructions for staying home while they wait for their test results. Scenario B. Student is sick with symptoms and has tested positive for COVID-19 or a healthcare provider said the student likely has COVID-19. Student response, student will stay home until all the following apply. They've not had a fever of 100.4 or greater for 24 hours without the use of fever-reducing medications. Their other symptoms have improved. It has been at least 10 days since the symptoms onset. Class response. Bloom in the fifth grade, the class moves to remote learning and teaching for 14 days. Grade six or above, the COVID-19 task force will investigate and make a recommendation. All other close contacts will quarantine for 14 days to see if they develop symptoms. If symptoms develop, then one, call their doctor, ask to get tested, follow their instructions for staying home while they wait for the test results. Scenario C. Student is sick with symptoms of COVID-19, has been tested and test results came back negative. The student shall stay home until they are feeling better. They have not had a fever for 24 hours without using any medication to reduce the fever. Class response, no notification occurs, students and staff may attend. Scenario D. Student is sick with symptoms of COVID-19, but has not yet been tested or is waiting for results. Student response. Student shall stay home in isolation until they are feeling better and all the following happens. One, they have not had a fever higher than 100.4 for 24 hours without the use of fever-reducing medications. Two, their symptoms have improved. Three, it has been at least 10 days since their symptoms onset. If waiting for test results, stay home until test results return. Follow scenario B or C depending on test results. Class response. Bloom in the fifth grade, the class moves to remote teaching and learning for 14 days. Grade six and above, COVID-19 task force will investigate, make a recommendation. All other close contacts will quarantine for 14 days to see if symptoms develop. If they do, one, call their doctor, two, ask to get tested, three, follow their instructions for staying home while they wait for their test results. Scenario E. Student has been in close contact with someone who shows symptoms, but has not been tested or is waiting for test results. Student response, student may continue to attend school and self-monitor symptoms daily. If the close contact person is tested and the test is positive, then student scenario applies. Class response, no notification occurs, students and staff may attend. Scenario F. Student has been in close contact with someone who tested positive for COVID-19, symptomatic or asymptomatic. Student response, student must stay home for the full 14 days after last contact with person and no symptoms arise. If symptoms appear, one, call healthcare provider, two, ask to get tested, three, follow healthcare provider instructions for staying home while you wait for the test results. See, student scenario D. Class response, no notification occurs, students and staff may attend. If the student develops COVID-19 symptoms and tests positive for COVID-19, follow guidelines in scenario B. If the student develops symptoms and tests negative for COVID-19, follow the guidelines in scenario C. Special note. Siblings of a student who was in close contact with a person who was tested positive for COVID-19 may continue to attend school. If the student, the sibling, was in close contact, developed symptoms, then all siblings to stay home. Scenario G. Student lives with someone who has tested positive for COVID-19. Student response. People living together usually have close contact with each other. If student living with a person who tested positive for COVID-19 is not able to completely separate from the person who tested positive, the student shall stay home and all the following shall happen. One, the sick person at home gets better. A, at least 10 days have passed since their symptoms started. B, haven't had a fever greater than 100.4 in the last 72 hours without using any medication to reduce the fever. And C, their other symptoms improve. Two, plus 14 days have passed since the sick person was better to see if other people in your home get symptoms. If the student living with a person who has COVID-19 is able to completely separate from the person who tested quarantine, who tested positive, they need to self-quarantine for 14 days after last contact with the person who tested positive and monitor symptoms. If student living with a person who tested positive for COVID-19 developed symptoms, one, call the healthcare provider, two, ask to get tested, three, follow healthcare provider instructions for staying home while you wait for the test results. See, student scenario D. Class response, no notification occurs, students and staff may attend.
Pat, do you want Leonard to go through the other scenarios? I don't know how many more. He offered to step in. It's up to you.
I'm okay. Thank you. Thanks, Leonard. Happy fourth day, my friend. Scenario H. Student has had close contact with someone with COVID-19 and gets sick, but has not been tested for COVID-19. Student response, students shall stay home and away from others as much as possible until they are better and all the following have happened. One, at least 10 days have passed since their symptoms started. Two, they've not had a fever greater than 100.4 in the last 72 hours without using any medication to lower the fever. Three, their symptoms improve. Four, plus 14 days have passed since they were last around the person with COVID-19. Class response, Bloom in the fifth grade, the class moves to remote learning and teaching remote teaching and learning for 14 days. Grade six, COVID-19 task force will investigate and make a recommendation. All other close contacts will quarantine for 14 days to see if symptoms develop. If they do, one, call the doctor, two, ask to get tested, three, follow their instructions for staying home while you wait for your test results. So those are the student scenarios and protocols. Now we're going to review the staff scenarios and protocols. Scenario A. Staff member has no symptoms and has tested positive for COVID-19. Staff response, the staff member shall remain at home and away from others and monitor symptoms. If the staff member remains symptom-free, they may return to school 10 days after they were tested. If during the 10 days, the staff member becomes symptomatic, then they must continue to stay home for at least 10 more days from the date of symptom onset and be all the following before returning to school. One, had a fever of 100.4 or above for 24 hours without the use of fever-reducing medications. Two, their other symptoms have improved. Three, has been at least 10 days since their symptom onset. Class response, Bloom in the fifth grade, the class moves to remote teaching and learning for 14 days. Grade six, COVID-19 task force will investigate and make a recommendation. All other close contacts quarantine for 14 days to see if symptoms develop. If they do, one, call doctor, two, ask to get tested, three, follow the instructions. Scenario B. Staff members have symptoms and has tested positive for COVID-19. The staff member shall stay home until all the following apply. Not had a fever above 100.4 for 24 hours without the use of fever-reducing medications. Two, other symptoms have improved. Three, it's been at least 10 days since their symptom onset. Class response, Bloom in the fifth grade, the class moves to remote teaching and learning for 14 days. Grade six or above, the COVID-19 task force will investigate and make a recommendation. All other close contacts will quarantine for 14 days to see if symptoms develop. If they do, one, call the doctor, two, ask to get tested. If they do, one, call the doctor, two, ask to get tested, three, follow the directions while staying home waiting for your test results. Scenario C. Staff member is sick with symptoms of COVID-19, has been tested and the test results came back negative. Follow the standard employee illness protocols returning to work. Example, 24 hours without fever of 100.4 or above or 48 hours after last episode of vomiting or diarrhea or went on antibiotics for at least 24 hours or as approved to work by doctor. Class response, no notifications occur. Students may attend. Scenario D. Staff member is sick with COVID, staff member is sick with symptoms of COVID-19, but has not yet been tested or is waiting for results. Staff member, staff response. Staff member shall remain at home. Recommend staff member to be tested. Staff member will stay home until all of the following apply. One, they've not had a fever greater than 100.4 for 24 hours without the use of fever reducing medication. Their other symptoms have improved. It's been at least 10 days since their symptom onset. If staff member is tested, stay home until test results return. Follow staff scenario based on test results. Class response, Bloom into fifth grade, the class moves to remote teaching and learning for 14 days. Grade six or above, the COVID-19 task force will investigate and make a recommendation. All other close contacts will quarantine for 14 days to see if symptoms develop. If they do, one, call the doctor, two, ask to get tested, three, follow their instructions for staying home while you wait for your test results. Scenario E. Staff member has been in close contact with someone who shows symptoms, but has not been tested or is waiting for test results. Staff response, staff member may continue to work and self-monitor symptoms daily. Class response, no notifications occur. Student may attend. Scenario F. Staff member has been in close contact with someone who tested positive for COVID-19 and they might be symptomatic or asymptomatic. Staff response, staff member must stay home for the full 14 days after last contact with the person and no symptoms arise. If symptoms appear, staff member must stay home until all the following apply. They've not had a fever greater than 100.4 for 24 hours without the use of fever reducing medication. Their other symptoms have improved. Been at least 10 days since their symptoms onset. Class response, no specific notification occurs. Students may attend. If staff member subsequently develops symptoms, follow student scenario that applies. Scenario G. Staff member is living with someone who tested positive for COVID-19. Staff response, staff member shall stay home and away from other people. If staff member is unable to have complete separation from the person who had a positive COVID test, they need to self-quarantine for two to 14 days after the person who tested positive ends their isolation. If the staff member is able to completely separate from the person who tested positive, they need to self-quarantine for 14 days after last contact with the person who tested positive. If the staff member develops symptoms, symptoms appear, stay home until all the following apply. If not had a fever of 100.4 or above for 24 hours without the use of fever reducing medication, their other symptoms have improved. It has been at least 10 days since their symptoms onset. Special note, total time required before the staff member may be able to return to work could be up to 24 total days. Class response, non-specific notification occurs. Students may attend. If the staff member who is in close contact develops symptoms and has had close contact with students, the student is determined to be in close contact, should stay home for 14 days since the last time they around the staff member to see if symptoms develop. If they do, one, call their doctor, two, ask to get tested, three, follow their instructions for staying home while they wait for the test results. If the staff member has not had close contact with students, the students may continue to attend while they monitor their symptoms. Scenario H. Staff member is in close contact to someone who tested positive for COVID-19 at work. Staff response, staff member in close contact to someone at work shall stay home and quarantine for the full 14 days after the last contact with person and no symptoms arise. If they do, staff member in close contact must stay home until all the following apply. One, they've not had a fever greater than 100.4 for 24 hours without the use of fever reducing medications. Two, their other symptoms have improved. Three, it's been at least 10 days since their symptoms onset. If staff members in close contact is tested, stay home until test results return. Follow scenario based on test results. Class response, non-specific notification occurs. Students may attend. So that concludes the part tonight as far as what's required for the plan that we need to submit to Oakland schools. Again, what we need approval for is for the safety measures, but we would also like to share additional information on our back to school plan.
Okay, so Pat, what we're going to do now is, some of my colleagues have questions and obviously this is live stream, people are watching. So I'm not going to pause the meeting, but if anyone needs during the question and answer to take a break, you know, please feel free to, with that, I'll start the questions. First one, Johnniki.
Yeah, I was wondering about the cleaning measures that you were talking about. I guess I'm wondering why are we focused so much on disinfecting surfaces when the primary mode of transmission is more airborne? And are we taking any measures surrounding like air circulation and stuff? And I know we had at one point talked about like outdoor classrooms and I was just wondering what is being done about that?
Well, everything in the plan is according to what the governor requires. So as part of the requirement, we need to say how we're going to clean the surfaces that are touched by a lot of students during the day. So the handle to the door, touched all the time, right? We know that. The handle to the principal's office, not touched as much as the bathroom door. So that's part of the plan. We do have, you know, Mr. Gobin and his team recently checked all the HVAC systems to make sure they were operating properly. We've also secured tents, whether it's 40 by 60 or 40 by 80, so that classes have easier access to go outside as part of the preparation plan as well.
Did you have a second question as opposed to going? I saw you had a question after Jackie in the chat room. So you could just ask your second question, then we'll go to Jackie.
I was just wondering about the response plans. Why is there a different response for asymptomatic and symptomatic students? And what I'm also wondering is, like, why is the response different for younger kids versus grades six and above? Why is that procedure different? And I'll just leave it at that. I have more questions.
Right, so the first part is, we're trying to take the best practices from CDC, from the Kent County Health Plan, from the Oakland County Health Plan, and leverage what others have done as well. As far as the difference between the age group, six through 12, every student has a mask on. K through five, students are wearing a mask on the bus as they enter the school, as they exit the school, or walking in the hallways. But since we're restricting them to one cohort during the day as opposed to sixth grade through 12th grade, although we're going to strongly recommend that students even K through five wear a mask, it will be, you know, a parent decision, therefore that whole group would need to go home.
Okay. I'm still unclear on why there's a difference between symptomatic and asymptomatic students when they both are testing positive?
I'd have to go back through and look at that.
Or Leonard, do you want to jump in? Or? Or we could, if we want to look into it, we can get back to that. We can get back to that question. Jackie?
Definitely, because I want to make sure everything's correct.
Yeah, if I'm wrong.
I don't know if Leonard, you had the answer. You seemed to took off your mic.
Yeah, I just didn't hear the question. What was the question?
I was just saying, I thought that there were, at least there were different like slides for response plans with asymptomatic students who tested positive and symptomatic students who tested positive. And I was just wondering why there would be different response plans for that?
Was it staff or students? Because the first one was students, the second one was staff.
I wrote it down when I was hearing the students' plan. There was a lot of information at once, so I might be wrong and they might have just been different slides with the same plan, but...
What's really important is we want to make sure we're giving out the correct information. So I'd rather take the time to go back and review it and make sure that we have a correct answer and we're not saying, oh, we think it's this, we think it's that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, we'll go around. Jackie?
Yeah, I was just going to follow up with, can you tell us a little bit? You said you had Brian check the HVAC to make sure it's all working, but could you speak to it with regard to the safety during COVID-19? Do we know anything about what? What has, you know, what is the power that has to be? Or do we know anything about it that, because it seemed a lot of questions on that in, at least frequent questions on that in our, in the public comment? Can you just go drill a little bit better, deeper on that, Brian or Pat?
Yeah, I agree with Brian, but also, Johnniki, keep this in mind and we'll get you more information. The CDC guidelines for asymptomatic and symptomatic differ as well. So that's going to be part of it, but we'll definitely get you more information. Brian, if you're on, can you talk a little bit about HVAC?
Yeah, so we're doing our normal summer maintenance and just reconfirming that all of our outside air dampers are functioning properly. And we'll be increasing the amount of fresh air that we pull in once the buildings become occupied. All of our, all of our units are getting new filter changes. We do those three times a year and those are MERV eight to MERV 13 filters. That's what our units are spec'd for.
Will we be changing the follow-up? Will we be changing the filter more frequently than during the school year than we normally do?
We're looking at that right now. Some new ASHRAE guidelines just came out for COVID. So right now we're sticking with our three times per year, but we're going to look into what this new information has to say. And I'll be working with Leonard too on what he learns and what he brings to our team.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa?
I just, I'm not really clear what we're being asked to approve tonight and what part, we're being asked to approve only the safety protocol? Where is that being submitted? Because my understanding was, we are submitting our full plan to Oakland schools. When does that occur?
So that is part of the full plan. The full plan is, with return to school, what are the safety measures that you have in place? It doesn't dictate some of the other things we're going to cover. So we cover the parts of the plan that need to be voted on.
Well, I don't think that we can piecemeal vote on parts of the plan. I think we have to vote on the whole plan. And my understanding is that we have to do that tonight because of the deadline being before the next time we meet.
I think, I think Lisa, it's what we need to submit to Oakland schools is our safety procedures. But yes, as a board, we're voting on the full plan, which right now it's face to face, five days a week with these safety precautions that need to go to Oakland schools and a virtual academy. And that's what later on in our meeting on the board business for what we're voting on.
All right, so I have the correct agenda that I'm looking at. All right, so, but we're, first, we're approving the safety plan. Then we're going to come back and approve the whole plan.
Everything can be saved until the end. We wanted to divide it up to make sure that everyone knew this is what requires action tonight. And then as far as our planning and all the work we've been doing to prepare for school, whether it's face to face or Bloomfield Virtual, we wanted to share additional updates for that that have been taking place that don't have to be as submitted as part of the plan. They're not required. It's important to update the board and the community on those things.
So this is, okay, I see. So this is an update that we are getting because we didn't have this information before. We're also going to get more updates on the virtual plan. And then at the end, we get to vote on the entire plan.
So this is similar to what we did back in April, where we had the plan that we had to submit, we voted on that, and then we had all the additional detail of what was going to be.
I haven't voted, I haven't voted on any plan yet.
No, April, when we did it in April for the remote learning plan, we had to approve that to send Oakland schools back in April. Previously, this is similar what we did previously. Now, I'm not saying you voted on anything before, other than the plan back in April, which I know seems like 10 years ago right now.
It's me, but I'm confused as to what, what parts we're voting on. Okay, so this is part of our overall plan, but it happens to be the safety because a lot of schools who are only doing virtual plans don't have this component. So it's throwing me off a little bit.
No problem.
Okay, so one more question, then just, I'm keeping it just about this so I can address, you know, parts of the other plan when they come up. Brian, is the HVAC system, does it have the HEPA filters that's required? Not just in the roadmap, but does it have the grade of HEPA filters that's required in the My Safe Start plan that, like for adult workplaces?
We have, we don't have HEPA filters. We have MERV eight through MERV 13, which are specified for our mechanical units. We can't put a heavier filter in there without reducing the airflow and then damaging the equipment. And according to, according to ASHRAE, that's acceptable.
Okay, and the exhaust that you explained, is that same as an external exhaust system? That's, I'm going by the My Safe Start. I'm having a hard time reconciling the discrepancies between the two plans. So if there's a higher standard, I just want to know. I would feel better if we could tell people we're meeting the higher standard, the one that's required for adults. So you were explaining the way the exhausts are being checked and I don't, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't understand a lot of the technical end of it. But are these, is it the same thing they're requiring of adult workplaces? External exhaust systems?
So we have some external exhaust systems in the building of the bathrooms exhaust and we have some special air equipment at Wing Lake due to the nature of the students that are there. But one thing important to know is, you can take a windowless classroom in our buildings and I'll use West Hills as an example, and I took the union president up through the units the other day. Those, those units on the roof are pulling in outside air through a controlled damper and they mix outside fresh air with return air and then it gets conditioned. So some people think that because there's no windows in a classroom, I'm not getting any fresh air, and that's not true. We provide fresh air to all of our spaces.
Okay, that's all our building, Brian?
Correct. Whether it's a rooftop unit, an air handler, or a vertical air unit.
So Lisa, can I add some more detail? Because I know we kind of switched to Brian. I didn't get a chance, if you don't mind, to answer, you know, provide a little, little more detail for you. So all schools are going to submit this plan. As part of the plan, you have to have these safety measures if you at any point you think you want to have face to face. So even the schools that said, all right, we're starting virtual, right? They have to have all the safety measurements in place as well. So that's kind of what we covered at the beginning. And if you look at what's required by the state, what we're supplying is much more extensive than what's actually required. So even if, you know, Cadillac School District, by Traverse City says, hey, it's June 1st and we're going remote. They had any thought of ever bringing kids into the building at any point for the whole school year, they'll need to submit this plan. So everyone's going to have those details for phase four and phase five as part of their plan. What we're not approving and what the state doesn't require is to approve an instructional model. That is at the discretion of the board. So you can approve any instructional model you feel necessary, right? And then it's our job to go and execute it. So that's why on that part, you don't need to have a vote on that.
Right, but Pat, doesn't the state want us to submit what our overall plan is? Aren't we supposed to submit that to the ISD in terms of we have a hybrid? We have virtual, we have virtual and in-person. We have to submit that.
But we'll submit, you have to submit what options might be available. And you're also allowed to, and I verified this today, anytime if we decide to do anything we want, there's not an update or anything that's required. That's at the sole discretion of the board.
Okay, well, I just want to say, whether we, whatever we're required or not, I want to make sure that we provide the community, especially after an hour and a half of public comments, with a, with an answer to as many as we can and a detailed enough plan before we take one step further with any of it. So whether it's required or not, I'm not comfortable moving forward without at least, you know, we already have a meeting and we have people already watching and submitting questions. I wouldn't want to go further requirement or not without giving them that information.
Completely understand. The way the state set it up is really more of a safety focus than instructional focus. But I understand exactly what you're saying. But I just want you to know, we're making sure that we've added additional detail far above what the state's required. But thank you.
Well, just to be clear too, and I appreciate that, the roadmap has zero requirements. There are strong recommendations. That's crazy. But okay, we, we, we... That's crazy, but okay, we, we, we surpassed.
I understand.
Yay, okay.
I, I get you. I understand.
Mark?
Yeah, I have an observation and then I have three specific questions. Observation going to what Lisa and Pat have just been talking about is I understand that we're required to submit, if we go back to face to face. What our safety protocols would be and whether we're face to face or not face to face, we still have to make that submission of what the face to face. Safety protocols would be, and that's what you just presented, and that's what we're voting on first tonight. As a separate question would be, well, what are we going to do? And I, the way I see it, or at least I understand the conversation, that there's three options. Option one is we're open for face to face with the option for people to elect to go to the virtual academy. That would be option number one for the board to decide. Second would be start remotely and then at some point go to face to face with a virtual academy. And the third option would be to investigate this a little bit more and then make the decision on those first two. Maybe not tonight, but maybe next week. Understanding with everything that there's going to have to be tremendous flexibility, because if we decide to go, for example, face to face with the virtual option tonight. Something could happen overnight that causes the administration to say tomorrow and up, we're going to start remotely. For example, what the governor said today about face masks being required for, you know, everybody age four and up in indoor spaces. So that's observation, three questions. If we could go back to slide sixteen, scenario D for students. I have a question there. And while David's shuffling the deck back, if David, you could put that up so I can remind myself of a question. Question number one, when it says that a student needs to stay home for 14 days after a certain event. What does that student do during those 14 days? Is that student still part of the face to face classroom and participating in that? By way of getting assignments, email or otherwise? Or is that student then being converted into the virtual academy? Which may have a very different schedule, different teachers, different assignments. So I don't understand what happens during this 14 day period. So that's my first question.
I think Pat, he may have technology wise had to drop off. Leonard, do you want to handle that, that question?
And real quick, Mark, which, which slide was it? So I can pull that up for you.
Slide number sixteen, which is student scenario D.
Leonard or Todd? I know Todd, you jumped in. If someone could handle it, I think Pat, technology wise had to jump off. He fell off. So one of you guys want to jump in, in that question?
Yeah, so, so I, I do know right, right now that as far as when, when Blooming through fifth grade does go on for 14 days. We are looking at implementing the homebound system. Now, I'm not as familiar with how the homebound based, based learning works through those, through those days. But I know that's what we discussed earlier. I know that, that Pat can speak in more, more detail about how that would look, but that is what we would be looking at.
I think, I think there are different situations there, Mark, in terms of like how a student may meet the requirement of needing to be quarantined. And so like if that child is in a classroom at the elementary level, it's very likely that that whole class. May have to go remote for 10 to 14 days. And I think what you're referring to, Mark, is well, what if, what if the, the requirement for quarantine doesn't happen by a student? Being, having, so maybe their parent does.
No, no, no. Todd, let's say it's a sophomore in high school or that has to stay home for 14 days. Is that student then taking those same classes throughout the day at home? Or is the student now in the virtual academy with different teachers and on a different schedule? And how does that work?
Okay, yeah, so we won't be moving them between, like if, if, because a parent is really going to have two options. To sign up for in-person slash distance learning and the slash distance is when it goes remote and then Bloomfield Virtual. We won't be mixing kids in the scenario one with scenario two, because it won't be an easy transfer to put them into that virtual schedule. But what we will do is we'll use available resources, maybe if it is a sophomore. And in addition to the parent or in addition to the, the teacher that the student is seeing. And come up with a plan for them to remain, to continue their studies. Now that could be directly in the classroom. It could be extra support in and outside that classroom hour. But we'll be working with building administration on Monday, as early as Monday to redefine what those specific details would look like. And then look at the map of available resources and teachers within a building that would be able to help support that student while they are quarantined for that 14 days.
Hey, listen, I applaud all, yeah, I mean, the effort that's gone into this is tremendous. But if the student's not in the virtual academy and I under, doesn't go into there, and I fully understand why, for all the staffing and scheduling reasons. But if that sophomore now isn't in the virtual academy and isn't in their classroom. Where are they seeing a teacher during the day or is everything, here are your assignments by email? Like I know, you know, I was sick when I was a sophomore and I was out for a day, you know, you catch up all your assignments, but if you're out for two weeks.
Right, so, so Mark. If it's okay with the board, that's part of the presentation a little later and I can discuss that a little bit later in the presentation, but that's one of the slides we have.
Alright, so I'll go back to my other two questions. If Dave can pull up slide sixteen, which was scenario D. And I have a question there.
I should be able to get it. I got kicked out, so I apologize. So slide sixteen.
Slide sixteen, what is? There we go. So this one says if a student is sick with symptoms of COVID, but has not yet been tested for results. And then I look over to class response for Blooming through fifth grade. If I understand this correctly, if a fourth grade student has a fever, has this runny nose. We don't know if it's COVID or not, but it just could be, you know, kids get sick because they get sick every single day in school. Then the whole class is out for 14 days. I mean, I can't imagine a fourth grade class that hasn't had a kid sick, at least one kid sick every single day all year long. And it just seems like, once the first kid gets sick, the class is going to be out for the whole year. So I don't know if that's a question or a statement. I apologize. But it just seems, you know, it's a very low threshold to shut down the class. I understand the safety concern. Maybe the board later tonight when we're deciding whether to go face to face or go remotely entirely. That's something to consider, but it just seems to me there that. Once you get the first fever, whether or not it's COVID, you're shutting down the class, the next fever, you're shutting down the class again, shutting down and you'll never be back. I don't know if Leonard can comment on what the differentiation would be. And I, Leonard, I apologize. I didn't mean to put you on the spot the first time we ever meet.
Mark, I can answer that, you know, K through five, they're not wearing a mask, even though they're within that same cohort. And so because of that, it would necess, you know, be necessary to keep them home for 14 days as part of that. So, and this is like the, you know, kind of like the movie, the never ending story. Because there are so many different scenarios and so many different things. You know, a big part of what we're trying to do is be medical professionals, right? And take the best practices. We've researched that we've met with doctors on the COVID-19 task force we have. And try to put procedures and policies in place so that if there is a COVID. A student or staff member that does have COVID, which we know is entirely possible because people aren't getting it. That we try to limit it to that one cohort or to as few students as possible. So we don't have the large spread you read about in some of the stories nationally. So again, this is what I talked about the last Board of Education meeting. That the reality is school is not going to look like, whether it's hybrid, whether it's fully virtual, whether it's in person. There's not one country or one school that has one plan that makes everyone happy and fits all the needs. You know, in the middle of this pandemic, I think sometimes we'll cite that. It's going to not feel, look, smell, taste, anything like school ever has.
But my question or comment or observation, whatever it was, was not meant in any way to be critical or.
Oh, I didn't take it that way. No, no, no.
It, I applaud the effort and all the detail that's gone into this and the thought is amazing, but. There's going to be all the planning that we do, something's going to come up, whether planned or unplanned, that causes us to scratch our heads and say, what do we do next here? But going to, last question was.
Trusty Bank?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I give you a little additional information though, just so it's clear? I know there's a lot of moving pieces tonight.
Yeah.
So they might not necessarily have to be there 14 days.
Okay.
Part of it's going to be until we have more information.
Okay.
And so our, our hope and we'll see how this goes is that the health department will be ready to test for COVID on a larger scale. But we know based on some conversations we're having right now, it can take anywhere from five to 10 days to get your COVID test and get a result. And so we just wanted to make sure that we're putting in what could be accurate. What we don't want to do is say, oh, your student will be out three days and then we hold your son out for 14 days. You're like, well, you said it was going to be three days. Why is he out 11 more days beyond what you, what you said in the target with what we're trying to do? We'll continue to move as more information's released. And that's okay, but that's, it is what it is on that.
I appreciate that. And my last question, I'll make it quick. I don't know the slide number, but it was staff scenario D. And it had to do with if a staff member comes into close contact with somebody who's had it. And I'm just envisioning a scenario where one of the teachers comes down with it. And then we say, well, of all the other teachers in that learning community, getting in close contact with that teacher. And suddenly we're shutting down a whole learning community or all the third grade teachers that pick a school away. You know, get together to do their, their planning. One of them gets it. And then we say, wow, they've all been in close contact and we have to shut down, you know, the third grade at, at particular school. So I'm not quite sure, yeah. How that works, you know, I understand there's no easy answer to that. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right.
Yeah, so that, that is a possibility.
Okay, so as we consider tonight later on, whether we're going to do face to face in virtual academy? Or whether we might delay that and start with remote learning, these are things that we, we have to consider along with all the thoughtful questions. From the community earlier today. I relinquish the microphone. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Paul?
Paul, we can't hear you.
Is he on? Oh, there he is.
I can see him.
He's not muted.
Yeah, Paul, unfortunately, we're not hearing you.
He may have to dial, he may have to dial back in with his phone if we can't hear you. Paul? Maybe you jump off and dial back in with your, with your phone. Maybe that's, that's, maybe it's a mic problem. When, while we're waiting, Cynthia?
Thank you. I have a few questions, starting with the, the enter building screening. You, there was no mention of temperature taking. There was this, the, the app or written form that would be filled out. I guess my question, one of my questions is. It would seem to me that that determination would need to be made before a student would even get onto a school bus. How would a school bus driver know whether, what we don't want is have, you know, a kid take a bus to school, parent go off to work. And then we have a problem if a kid has, is, arrives with, and is checked at school and finds, finds a problem. So I guess, how do we know when a kid gets on a bus that they're going to be cleared to be in school? I understand that there are some other districts that are using an app called Clear2Go. Have you considered something?
So we have, so we have our own app that we can use in-house to do that. We'll also have the paper and pencil. So that's one of the things we're still trying to, that is, once they get to school, if they don't have that sheet of paper. Or if they don't have a phone or a tablet where they can show the app. Then right now we'll need to figure out, do they go directly to the quarantine room? How many are going to be into, how many can stay in the quarantine room? How far do they need to be a part of that point? All the research shows that the first place to start really needs to be at home. That parents need to be involved with the screening of their children and asking those questions. So it's at the front of their mind every day. Did you have a cough? Did you have a diarrhea and all these different things? So that's why, you know, we have it that way. But there's still some more detail as far as what happens when they get to school. If they haven't been screened. So if they have eight kids at the high school that show up at the freshman door, for example. And they don't have it clear on their phone, then, you know, we're still working on that.
Then, uh, next question, I'd like a little more information about bathroom cleaning protocol, not just what happens at night when it's sprayed down. Because high school bathrooms are notoriously a challenge. And I'm, once a night, cleaning is not going to be sufficient. We know that aerosol spread in a bathroom is a danger place.
So early in the presentation, I talked about the cleaning and how those surfaces and those areas that are common use are going to be done more. So that would include all the bathrooms. So instead of just giving you a hypothetical, instead of saying the floor needs to be washed every night in every building. It might be every other day because more time is spent on cleaning the bathrooms. And the other thing that I also want to bring up is that on Monday, when the building administrators are back. We're going to look at individual buildings and specific cleaning protocols for those buildings. Based on number of bathrooms, the location, for example, some of the elementary rooms. They have the bathrooms in the classroom. That's a total different scenario than the middle school or the high school. So a lot of these things are still works in progress. And that's kind of what I might have said earlier. We're trying to get as many answers as we possibly can. So for every 10 questions we get answered, five more come in that we're trying to get answers to. That's kind of what we're doing right now.
So another question is about lunch time. So we know that, that K five are eating in their classroom, but the six, eight in the high school students. I, I have concern about the passing, the, the socialization. The spaces that they were going to be, will be eating in. I understand that there are some districts that are looking at sort of like a grab and go kind of lunch situation. Or delivered to classroom situation. And I wonder if you could address that a little bit more.
Yeah, so six through eight will be eating in the classrooms or a larger space. That are exited by the specials. By moving the specials to virtual, we've been able to gather some of the additional spaces. The gym, the media center, the computer lab, the fine arts area. So we'll be able to spread them out more. I'll talk about the high school in a little bit, but, sorry, the food service plan in a little bit. But part of what the high school is also doing is they're looking at four lunch periods to help spread the students out even more than a typical three lunch period.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I guess the other question is regarding the K five issue of masks.
Yes.
So I understand the practicality of asking very young children to wear a mask all day. Is, is extremely hard to, to contemplate. That being said, I think most other districts are doing so. And we do need to keep our teachers safe too. And so I, I, I continue to have concern about that issue.
Thank you.
Paul? Cynthia, did you have any other questions or was that it? Paul?
Is it working now?
Yes, it's working.
Okay, so a question that I've received in my communication with some students is, especially with these scenarios. When it comes to information, like people saying that they've been in contact. Staff being in contact with someone at home or students at home. How do, is this information all going to be self-reported? And if so, how do we ensure maximum accuracy with this information?
So you have a great question, Paul, because we can't guarantee it's going to be reported, right? So we know there are people that have COVID-19 right now that are asymptomatic and have no idea they have it. I'm not telling you anything that everyone watching tonight doesn't know. We already know that. It also would require someone who does have mild symptoms to go and report it. So there is no guarantee that people are going to do that one way or another. And if they don't, that makes it difficult to contact trace. So someone feels a little nauseous two or three days in a row, the student shows up to school each day, doesn't let anyone know. Tells mom in the morning, I feel great, I feel fine. I mean, so when it does come to contact tracing. We'll do it A as the district and B as the health department as well. And one thing that will be helpful, that if we do know about it, that seating charts and bus charts will help us with this. So that's another thing we talk about, how is school going to look different? When you're on the bus, there needs to be a seating chart. When you're in the classroom, there needs to be a seating chart, K through 12, because of contact tracing. When you're in the classroom, there needs to be a seating chart, K through 12, because of contact tracing.
Thank you.
Paul, do you have any other questions?
Um, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, um, back to Janice, then Jennifer?
My questions were already answered.
Okay. Jennifer?
So I think my first question, which pertains to Mark's question about what happens to the one student who has to stay home. I think we're gonna do that later. Is, is that right?
Yes, I'll have some more information on that later. Yes.
My question there has to do with live streaming, so I, I would like us all not to forget to, to ask about that. Um, regarding Cynthia's point with the bathroom, this, this isn't really a question, just, just more feedback. Um, at the band camp last week, we limited bathroom occupancy to two at a time. Um, and there was a parent who sat outside and kind of kept track of that, which obviously is not feasible. They school all day. Maybe there could be like a little flip chart, you know, right outside where you flip it over when you go in, you flip it back when you leave, so that people coming up to the door could know how many people were in there. You know, we, we know the virus doesn't live terrifically well on surfaces, although moisture would be an issue. Um, and that it's really proximity of one human to another that's critical. And so I think that might, that might help something to, to think about. I am not trying to pass myself off as a physician, um, to make that determination. Um, and then to, to just another quick comment to Cynthia's point. Um, K5 masks is in the governor's plan. Um, I can't remember if it's medium recommended or strongly recommended, but I, i-if it is indeed strongly recommended, I also agree that we should revisit that requirement. Uh, and my, my question here is really, what's going to happen if a student in 612 or K12, if we require, if we extend the mask? Um, if they're asked a second time or reminded a second, third, fourth, you know, our, our teachers cannot be masked police, um, what do, do we have a system for, um, dealing with non-compliance? If, if that is the case?
Yes, so we would follow our student code of conduct, which lays out what would happen as far as consequences for students that are non-compliant to a direct order. That is a reasonable thing to ask. No different than me saying to a student, you know, you're swearing in class, you can't swear, and they continue to swear. It is a directive that's given to the student.
Well, like.
Another thing that we'll try to do, or we plan to do, is to have a social contract to really try to build the idea. You know, when you talk about portrait of a learner and what we're looking for and the qualities we're expecting is being a good citizen. So we'll try to actually leverage that as well, so that the social contract kind of adds that additional expectation for students. But you're right, that is a concern. And that's a concern that I continue to receive from the emails from teachers saying, I want to be able to teach. I can't be a masked police the whole day. Um, and that is one of the concerns they brought up as well, um, either in emails or the two meetings we've had in the past two weeks.
Yeah, I just, I think that has to be very clearly delineated, you know, and that, that be enforced. Thanks.
Lisa?
All right, so, um, my question, questions have sort of been answered too, but, uh, just to go into more detail, um, how, how are we going to enforce all of these regulations? And what are students not properly wearing a mask or took them at? I mean, who's responsible? What are, um, and what happens if there's no compliance?
There's no compliance, we'd have to continue with the code of conduct, which is progressive discipline. But you're right, you, you brought, you brought an honest point. There are going to be issues with kids complying to wear a mask. It's no different than students not complying to do other things. And a lot of that unfortunately would fall on the teacher as they're teaching. You know, it is, it is a difficult task to be a teacher. Here, I know that it's been 16 years in the classroom. Under these circumstances, it is even more difficult because you're trying to manage so many things, whether it's the mask, the limited ability to move around the room. You know, our goal is to try to find a way to bring students back, you know, and try to make it, you know, mitigate exposure to the best of our ability. And when we talk about three different groups, right? We're looking at three different groups. We're really trying to find out what works best for them. Our teachers, our students, and our parents. And this, those three stakeholders. And what is really, really, what are they looking for? What is best for them? Nothing aligns. It doesn't align. Each of those three groups is seeking something completely different. And all the plans that exist that we've looked at, whether our conversations with, you know, Japan, South Korea, Canada, Israel, Denmark, there's not a plan that aligns to those three groups. The other thing we can look at, Lisa, if it's a continued poor pattern of behavior, we do have the right of assignment. So we can say, you know, we're going to put you in a alternate setting. So whether that's the ability to go to V-LAC or some of the other programs that are out there, we can make that. So it would be working with me, the administrators, and the Board of Education to change the educational setting. So it might be somebody had a bad day, right? We know that everyone's stressed out, everyone has tons of anxiety. But if it's a continued pattern of behavior, we do have the right to change their academic setting.
All right, I, I, you know, I just have to say, my concern is that, uh, th-this is something there's a lot of anxiety about, you know, districts are, uh, by, by the hour reverting back from all, um, face-to-face learning, whether it's hybrid or full-time, going all online or all virtual. And I, I want parents to know if this is an option, what they can expect realistically. So i-if there's going to be, I mean, there's going to be non-compliance. You know, we've run a couple of programs over the summer and whether it's intentional, whether it's inadvertent, someone's, uh, strap on a mask could break. Some, I mean, realistically, I, I think, you know, you would said it a couple of meetings ago, Pat, if you have this level of concern, if you have, um, anxiety about strict compliance, or if you have people at home who are cop-immune compromised, we really can't in good faith recommend this as an option to them.
Yeah, my comment, and I'll be consistent with my comment, which is if, if, if you're not sure, then virtual is the best option. There's no question about that. Because there are a lot of what-ifs, and there are also the unknown, right? We don't know what's going to happen next week. We don't know what policies are going to change. So if you're debating as a parent, I'm on the borderline, I'm not sure. My advice would be to select virtual. But every parent has different needs and every student has different needs and every staff member has different needs. And we're trying to meet what we can, but no plan's going to meet all those needs. It's just not possible.
Well, and I want to say, you know, just to sort of piggyback on what Mark said, uh, I, I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job, um, because look at the work that goes into planning not but two different programs. But, um, if I'm going back to the roadmap and what's required, nothing. So anything was above the required level, and that makes me nervous.
You're right.
I, I've said it the last two meetings, I know that there's districts out there that are going as far as asking parents to send release forms. I just want parents to know that there is no guarantee of safety. I think we have to say that, there's just not. We could do all these things, uh, we're not going to distance them six feet apart. We don't know if we can even get three feet apart. It really depends on how many enroll in in-person learning. So I, we have to be really clear about that. Even the emails that, uh, that we received or the comments that we just heard urging for face-to-face are, are working under some kind of an assumption that there's some promise of safety that we can't make and that doesn't exist. And I just want to be honest about that.
And I brought that up at the beginning of the presentation. That was the first thing I said on the second slide. Because you're right, we need to be upfront. Um, we're going to try to mitigate as best we can, but there is no guarantee of safety. You know, this is, we, how many times have we said uncharted waters, unprecedented, whatever we want to say. The bottom line is, everyone's anxious, everyone's nervous, everyone's looking through the lens of what is going to best serve my child, and everyone's frustrated.
I, I also, uh, really quickly want to say, uh, I agree with Cynthia 100%. K through five, this was when we asked Phil last, uh, last meeting, what the number one concern of teachers was right at that point. I'm sure it's changed, it's two weeks is a long time, but it was K through five unmasked. And honestly, I've gotten emails and, and, um, we all did, from a parent who said her daughter wore a mask all summer at camp and now she likes it. She wears it just for fun at home. Uh, and she's a kindergartner, so, uh, that's one anecdotal incident, but nevertheless, uh, I just wonder, how, how, you know, I'm weighing the pros and cons of having the K through five mask and it just doesn't seem, uh, you know, this is causing a lot of anxiety for teachers with good reason. No brain over me.
What I'm hearing you say, and you know, trustee, I know I brought up the same thing. We need to revisit that is what I'm hearing you say. Okay, I've already written that down. Thank you.
So we don't have any more, there's, there's no more questions. So I just, I just kind of want to frame out the, the rest of this, because I know you have a part two, Pat. Um, one thing I do want to say, and I'm sure one of my colleagues will make an amendment. But, um, just in terms of, you know, we do have a couple of other items of board business that won't take time. Then we obviously want to get back to part two, and then obviously 5D is, um, you know, the key critical vote regarding this. And I, I would like to move up the second public comment to be before that as opposed to after that. Um, so that's one amendment I'd like a colleague of mine to make. Um, so if we can do that, and then, um, maybe we can go to the other, other items of board business before we go back to your presentation, Pat, part two.
Yeah, just tell me when you'd like me to pick up.
Okay, so President Cole.
Yeah, so if we want to go, if we want to go to.
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda, uh, that's your desire, to take a 6A public comment and put it, uh, uh, between 5C and 5D.
Just say C2 or something, or.
Yeah, so C2, uh, take, uh, public comment and make it C2.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Lisa seconded. I'm sorry, Jennifer.
And we'll just quickly vote on, we'll just vote on it. Um, uh, Lisa?
Uh, what, what happens if people want to make a comment about, um, what we've said at the end of the meeting?
Let, let me do, let me do this.
I'm sorry, what was that, Lisa?
Lisa, all right, Lisa's saying, what happens if people want to have a public comment after? So let me amend my amendment. Uh, why don't we leave 6A where it is, but add another public comment as 5C2?
I don't understand.
I mean, froze for a second. Do we have a second?
Um, so Lisa, he is proposing that we have two more public comments, both.
Correct.
All right.
Yeah, um, and after.
I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like, so we have some people that already entered public comment. I'd like it to go before we vote as opposed to after we vote.
No, 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 what I'm, what I, my current proposal, and I changed it. My current proposal is to have two public comments in the rest of the meeting. One before, uh, or one is C2 or 5C2, and then leaving, uh, 6A where it is if people want to comment after we make our vote.
But how will we be, it's on a spreadsheet, so how will we be able to distinguish who wants to comment when?
If there are any incremental comments that come in, uh, with a timestamp after, um, we finish, uh, 5C2.
I'll manage, I'll manage that with, with Rebecca. We'll, we'll manage that again. I just want to have an opportunity that people who have public comment to do it before.
I'll second that. Sorry, I'm confused now. What, what's the motion?
We can vote, uh.
The motion is.
The motion is to have an extra public com.
Go ahead, Paul.
The motion is to add a public comment before our vote, because we have some residents who have already entered public comment. I'd, I'd like to hear it, the public comment before we vote on the plan. Right now, public comment is after we vote on the plan to give them the opportunity for us to hear their comments before we vote on the plan.
Okay, thank you. All right, do you need a second?
Jennifer seconded.
Second?
Discussion.
All right. Discussion, Mark?
We have a published agenda. If we want to move the one public comment up, I'm fine with that. But to keep adding public comments in between, we're never going to get through this meeting tonight. And when people are putting their comments in, I don't know if the person who put their comment in who's next on the list was planning on being read at the end, and that's why they put it in there. And then we're now moving their comment out of order from what they intended. And I think we should either stick to the agenda or move it, but I don't think it's right to add two.
For me.
Discussion.
Or as long as we, everybody who wants to comment gets to comment, I don't care where it comes in. I don't know what we're.
All right, we could just, again, we, we have, we have, we have a, we, we could have a, a vote right now. It's, it's, um, it's, um, I guess Howard, just one more. If you wanted to, you want to make, to move 6A up to 5, after 5C. So we don't have, you know, three sets of public comment, and we can either vote it on or vote it off.
I was trying to cut the baby in two and do what Lisa said earlier, but if Lisa is fine with doing all the public comments before, um, uh, 5D, I, I will go back to my original amendment, which is, um, uh, move public comment 6A to 5C2.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, and we'll just vote on it. Mark?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
I'm yes, so that passes. Sorry, that took so long, everybody out there. Well, and so let's go to Board Business 5A. We'll do 5A, B, and C, and then we'll go back, Pat, to your second part of the plan. Kelly, first reading of a board policy update?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, members of our listening audience. Um, I am sharing with you tonight, um, recommended changes for, um, board policy 1003, which requires, um, no board action at this time. This is being presented for a first reading only. And this is changes for policy 4002 and policy 8007. And these changes are being recommended in response to recent revisions in Title IX regulations.
Okay, that's just the first reading. Any comments, discussions? We're not voting on anything?
Yeah, yes, Mr. President, I put a question in.
Yeah.
Can you go through, um, the changes to employment conditions, uh, policy 4002? Um, there were two words added or two changes. Could you just kind of step through the justification of why those changes are made other than the law change? But what, why? Why would we add the word in, in particular? Why would we add the word illegal against discrimination? Don't we, aren't we against all discrimination, whether it's legal or illegal?
Yes, trustee Barrett, that is, um, not a question that I'm prepared to answer from the, the specifics of why this is being recommended from the Policy Committee. But what I can, or our Policy Service, what I can do is get that information and share it with the full board in a weekly update.
Please, because, uh, yeah, so, uh, question is, you know, so the word illegal is being added, and I'd like to understand why, uh, before discrimination. And then also, uh, where we're talking about, um, no tolerance for discrimination or harassment, the, the original wording on this next sentence says there is no. says there is no tolerance for discrimination or harassment on the basis of race, color, et cetera, et cetera. And words of inemployment was added. So why would we want to have discrimination, whether it's in employment or with students, it doesn't matter. Why would we add the qualifier of inemployment? Even though I understand that this is in a policy that says employment considerations, but I would think we would be against discrimination, harassment, whether it's in employment or in any situation, whether it's a, a parent or coming to us or a student. I'm just, I'm not understanding why we're qualifying these two terms. Thank you.
I can answer that, I think.
Well, I would rather have the service that had put it in if Kelly doesn't have the information.
She explained this to us. We subscribe to a policy update service.
Right.
The understanding that I have is that this is reflective of the recent Supreme Court case, BOSAG, da, 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 whatever. And that's why it specifically states employment because that's been the change in law. So yes, we do have policies that prohibit any kind of discrimination, but she's specifically referencing something that was brought to her attention by our service. And it was red flagged because we have a Supreme Court case that had a ruling. That's why. Kelly, if I'm wrong, correct me.
No, I believe that's the reason. And I think it's not, it's supposed to be inclusive of eight thousand and seven, which has prohibiting discrimination and harassment in general. But the four thousand series is specific to employment. But I'll get the specific logic behind the recommendation and share it out with the full board. That's no problem.
I, I'd much appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Lisa, you had a question?
Well, that was it really. But I want to make sure we're not now holding up something that is recommended us by the attorney that needs to be in the policy. Because this is the first review. We have to, I don't, all right.
Well.
It's a first reading.
I understand. Yeah. One of the things that the rest of the board needs to understand, normally these would go through the policy committee and we would vet it before it comes to the actual board. But this, I think there's a time critical basis on this. And therefore, assistant superintendent decided that it, Bowles decided that timing was the, of the essence. So therefore, our first policy committee meeting is not until September. So that's why it's coming without being vetted at this point through other, through the policy committee.
Thanks, Howard. All right. Thanks, Kelly, for the first reading. Kelly, I actually skipped over. We go back to four A administrative appointments.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. President. Again, members of the board, members of our listening audience, it's my great pleasure to recommend to you Leonard Stanford Jr. for the position of Director of Health and Wellness. As you can see from his interactions tonight, Leonard on day four has already jumped right into his position and his role. Leonard brings to this position a wealth of experience in health and wellness, having most recently served as the practice manager for a family and internal medicine practice in Ann Arbor. Leonard has a bachelor of science degree from Wayne State University, a master of health and service administration from the University of Detroit Mercy, and he's currently pursuing a doctorate in healthcare administration. If approved, Leonard will serve in this role for the 2020, 21 school year only because this is a one-year position.
Thanks, Kelly. Leonard, you want to say a few words? Congratulations, Leonard. Welcome to the dashboard.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. President and all members of this committee. I'd just like to say thank you all for the opportunity to serve alongside of you all in this brand new role. As, as you know, the phrase has been thrown out so many times, it's unprecedented and uncharted waters. But these, this past week, I've been very grateful to have connected with some really awesome people already on the VHS team and looking forward to making a positive impact here in this 2020, 21 school year. Thank you all.
I move that Leonard Stanford Jr. be appointed as Director of Health and Wellness effective date on August third of 2020.
Second.
Any other discussion? Mark?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes, and welcome, Leonard.
Howard?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes, and I'm so glad you're with us.
Yes. Same here. Congratulations, Leonard. Motion passes seven oh.
Congratulations, Leonard.
I'm sure we'll be hearing a lot and seeing a lot of Leonard or at least hearing from him, at least in the next couple of weeks, minimum, you know, if not more, as we go through these plans. Kelly, five B ratification of ad council agreement.
Yes, thank you. The fiscal district has a collective bargaining agreement, the administrative council, which covers the terms and conditions of employment for building administrators and some instructional leadership positions. The contract expires on June 30th, 2022 and has a wage re opener for the years 2021 and 2122. This agreement is for the wage re opener only. The estimated cost of this agreement is $59,798 across all.
I have a motion.
I move that the agreement with the administrative council on compensation for the 2020, 2021 and 2021, 2022 school years be approved as presented.
Do I have support?
Support.
Jennifer? Howard?
I.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
I, I'm yes. Motion passes seven oh. Thanks, Kelly, for your hard work and everyone involved. Congratulations on getting this approved. Next, five, five C approval of bond professional services agreement. I know Tina gave us a presentation at FFLA. Tina, if you just want to say a few words, then we can make a motion.
I can't hear her.
Yeah. Tina, I don't think we can hear you. Yeah, I was wondering maybe it was just my.
Now I have to remember what I said.
That was, that was very good, Tina. You did, you did very well. If we, you know, I mean.
I had myself double muted. I didn't want to interrupt earlier. So yes, we did discuss this at FFLA. And I also summarized the very lengthy agreements that are part of the board package tonight for, for the public as well as for the board. And we covered all of the highlights. We've worked with these firms for a number of years on other projects. And tonight we are recommending and asking for the board's approval to proceed with our bond program that we're very thankful was passed. It came down to, since we already know the quality of the work, it really came down to the fees. And with many districts having passed bonds and having gone through bond programs in the past three years, we looked at 12 and 15 architect and CM contracts and proposals and compared those to the fees, helping us negotiate very favorable terms for our bond program going forward. So all of the details are there for all three. And I will note for this bond program, we do have a third separate technology design contract. So that is the district directly contracting, which is really in the best interest of the district to do it that way, especially given how integral technology is for our bond program.
Thanks, Tina. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute an agreement with each of the following professional service providers to be paid for with the Bloomfield Hill Schools improvement bond proceeds. One, construction management, Barton Mallow Builders LLC for a lump sum not to exceed $10,493,731. Two, architect, Brent Associates Inc. at five percent of the cost of the work, designed as all hard construction costs and contingency actually used, which equates to a maximum of $9,515,452 plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed $200,000. It is planned to enter into a fixed fee based on the foregoing formula following the design development phase. Technology design, Barton Mallow Builders LLC for a lump sum not to exceed $1,288,100.
I have support.
Support.
Discussion. Any discussion? Howard?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
I'm yes. Motion passes seven oh. With that, Pat, we can go back to part two of your discussion. Dana, did you want, I know you joined. Did Dana, did you want to, oh, she left. All right. Easy come, easy go. You want to go back? Maybe she didn't want to listen to part two of our plan. She got scared. Pat, do you want to go through that?
Thanks, President Cole. Yes, let me pull it back up. So we went through this already. Let me go back. All right. So part two, additional information. This is additional information outside of our protocols for cleaning, contact tracing, screening and COVID responses. So as we know, in phase four or five, we've been planning for in-person with distance learning when necessary. So part of what we've been continuing to work on are facial coverings, requirements, our hygiene procedures, our cleaning procedures, what we're doing for athletics, screening, testing and contact tracing, transportation, food service, specials, electives, K through eight, reduced day, K through eight and class size movements. We know if we go to phase one through three, state, county or district school closures, we'll all need to go to distance learning and that would be public, private or charter. An option two, Bloomfield Virtual, with either a commitment for one or two semesters. We released the website earlier, the student handbook, sample schedules and special electives K through eight have been presented prior. So kind of status update and information on school closures. In phases one through three, if the governor requires schools to be closed or if the spread of COVID requires school closures, we will utilize the distance learning model online for students for the duration of the closure. This will not resemble that we did last year in remote learning, which we all know we did in the middle of the crisis and kind of had to pivot in a short period of time. So as a family, I think it's important to understand that you take the time to make sure you have your own plan as a family in the event that we are closed for a shorter extended period of time during the school year. We all know that it's going to be an interesting school year, to say the least. And anytime we can move back into phase three, anytime we may have a class or students that need to go out because of COVID. Teaching and learning is remote with daily attendance and real-time digital interactions with students, classroom teachers. Remote teaching and learning includes required activities, assessments and experienced guided feedback and grades. All extracurriculars are canceled for in-person activities, including athletics, clubs. Again, this is in phase one through three. Students will stay with the same cohort, assigned teachers and similar daily academic structure as in person. A little bit of budget update. What we know, we know that last year's funding reduction is 175 per pupil, so about a million dollars. We know that there's restricted federal funding. Coronavirus relief funds of 12 point or $12.32 per pupil was received in July. Also coronavirus relief funds of 350 per pupil is expected in August. And that Corona relief funds is for the COVID-19 expenditures through December 31st, 2020. And we're expecting some additional guidance soon. What we don't know, which is going to be this year's pupil funding, but however, there is a state consensus revenue estimating conference, which is scheduled for August 24th as of now. So we've kind of released these. It's just a reminder, K through, K through two sample virtual schedule. It shows when the check-in, the connections, where we have math, break, the reading, another check-in for connections, writing, break, academic block and asynchronous learning. I know some of the stuff we've gone through kind of quick, but for those that are out there watching, we will be updating all this information to the blueprint website as well, so that you have the time to fully look at it and take the time that you need as you work towards your decision. Grade third through fifth sample schedule. And there was something else that was brought up as far as some questions I received, including today about the bell schedule. You will follow the bell schedule of the building that you are in. So if you're in East Hills, regardless of your grade, will follow the bell schedule for that building. Because we know we have some configurations that are not, or none of our configurations are K through five, but you will follow the bell schedule of your building. So again, third grade through fifth grade sample, you have the check-in at the beginning. So think of that time that they traditionally would be on the carpet, meeting with the teacher, that check-in, mathematics for 60 minutes, break, reading, writing, break, academic block, and then asynchronous learning. And keep in mind, there's also synchronous and asynchronous during, you know, like math and reading. So when you see mathematics in 60 minutes, they're not looking at that screen the full time. But what we've done is we moved to Zoom as a platform that allows the kids to check in one day and they can keep that Zoom open, although they're not going to be looking at the screen the whole time. And so the teacher might decide for this 15 minutes, we're going to work on this and then we're going to pull up small groups in Zoom, or we're going to have them collaborate, or it's going to be a short introduction. They're going to work for a half an hour and then they can check with me as they're working if they have questions. I know I've received a lot of questions about that as well. Middle school virtual sample schedule, asynchronous, the beginning, unified arts and electives, the math for 75 minutes, break, language and literature for 75 minutes, then lunch, science, break and social studies. The Bloomfield Hills High School virtual schedule. And it will also be the distance learning schedule. And that's the same thing. If we go to remote learning, because we're in phases one through three, that means that everyone's going to be following those that are in the virtual schedule. So they'll be using the same schedule. So looking at the high school schedule, you can see how first and second hour, you've got your daily block set up. And then Wednesday is a little bit different day for the high school students and you can see that as well. Again, all this will be displayed on the website. So people, if you have, you have a student in second grade and eighth grade and you really want to dive into it and take the time to write it down, to go over it and see what you think about it, we will have this uploaded to the website. Sample schedules for distance learning. So Bloomfield Virtual, we've got more information about special education supports, K through six resource room, nine through 12 resource room, ancillary services, students that are receiving specialized support, and then a sample schedule as well. So you can see when your student would be pulled out for resource room. Again, these will all be on the website. Same thing, sample virtual schedule, third grade through fifth grade, for those students that are receiving some additional academic support that are being pulled out for the resource rooms. Facial coverings, K through 12, adults must wear masks in this area. So an adult must wear a mask inside the building at all times, except for when they're eating lunch. The only exception, and this exception is for all adults and students, if they have a medical reason and have a doctor's note. Elementary and middle school in the common areas. So if you're walking in the building, you're going into a bathroom outside the building, you're walking to the office, you're in the halls, you must wear a mask. I've also heard from several board members, they want us to revisit K through five, wearing a mask. So we'll do that as well. Six through eight classrooms, everyone must wear a mask in the classroom in all common areas, the exception being at lunch. In high school, everyone must wear a mask in school. Again, except if you have a doctor's note or during lunch time. Facial coverings in elementary classroom, while wearing a mask is optional for K through five students within the classroom. We strongly recommend that all K through five students wear a mask throughout the entire day. It's important that are wearing a mask, that they're wearing it properly. Health and safety considerations. So daily pre-screen for staff and students with our symptom checker. Base coverings will be required on the bus and in common spaces. Visit the website. Face coverings will be required on the bus and in common spaces. Um, visit the website, the Blueprint page for additional details. Access to schools will be limited, students and staff as much as possible. Hand sanitizer will be provided at building entrances and classrooms and in shared spaces. A new temporary welcome letter. Uh, Director of Health and Wellness will ensure effective system-wide implementation of health and safety practices. Regular cleaning of all BHS schools, facilities, and buses. There'll be increased spacing in the building, classroom layouts, arrival and dismissal procedures will be modified to maintain physical distancing. Hand washing will be required throughout the day, including before and after meals. BHS will continue to provide technology devices to students in needs as identified. There will be limited sharing of school supplies. Students are asked to label supplies brought from home to the greatest extent possible. Students will store belongings in containers to help them or help keep items apart. Students and staff will receive training on COVID-nineteen prevention practices, including social distancing and face covering use. Spacing of desks, so this is that Eastover. So desks will be spaced three to six feet apart. In a limited number of cases, desks will be less than three feet apart. And if you look at the screen that's circled, those will be put on all the K through five desks. So I'm gonna leave this slide up for about thirty seconds so everyone can take a look what an elementary classroom would look like. So these desks are all faced, or sorry, all spaced three feet apart. Then you can see I'm in the front of the classroom where the teacher would be, uh, to instruct. And from where I'm at to the first student desk is six feet apart. Again, I'll leave it up here a little bit so people can take a look, because I know this is going to be of huge interest.
And Pat, just to clarify, the, the desks are facing forward? It would stay that way?
You are correct. All desks will face forward. Students will be in assigned seats. Um, the teacher is expected as best as possible to stay six feet apart. Um, the desk, you know, we're asking students to social distance as best as possible. But, but let's be honest, we know students aren't going to see their friend and run up and give them a hug. We know that we're going to tell them, you should play in this area of the playground, and some are going to look to go off and play with their friends. You know, we can't be naive and think that, that three-feet bubble is just, it's not like those little hamster balls that you see for those games that, you know, you watch on TV or you see graduation parties. They're not going to be the little hamster ball. They will at times be much closer than three feet. Kids do that. I've watched my own subdivision, kids that are out playing, and the parents are trying to keep them apart. Next thing you know, the parents turn their back, and they're within, you know, one foot of each other. And that's, that, I mean, that's the reality. You know, we looked at a couple models out of South Korea, in Japan, where they required the students to wear a hat. Then out of the hat, they had like foam, I don't know, like, like a swim noodle coming out. That was three feet to help remind the kids to always say three feet away from each other. You know, for literally ten seconds, I thought in my mind, maybe we'll go with those hats and ask the kids to wear them. And then I realized, it's just ridiculous. You know, I couldn't sit here and, and ask students to wear a hat that has foam noodles coming out of it that are three feet each, three feet each. So if they butt up against each other, they're then staying six feet apart. As you can imagine, the minutia, the granular work is still, a lot has to be continued. Um, now, parents.
Pat, I'm gonna, I'm gonna date myself. Think, think about the Flying Nun, if you're back from the sixties.
Yes, yes, I've watched it. Oh, my gosh. Um, Howard, Trusty Baron, I don't know where you're going, but I did like the show. Keep going.
No, saying Sister Petrell had this, you know, wings on her, on her, on her hat.
Yeah, Sally Field.
Very much like you're talking about.
It is. Pat, is it gonna be Plexiglas in front of the teacher? I know that some places are having like Plexiglas in front of the teacher as well.
So if you look at what's on the desk that we have highlighted, what we've ordered is one for the teacher that has a handle, that's portable. It would actually be three feet high so that the teacher, if they decided, you know what, I need to get closer than that six-feet distance, not only would the student have the barrier on the desk, but I could come over, I could bring my barrier as well and set it on the desk. So it will be portable. So when you think about, we all have an understanding of what school used to look like. I think it's important, and I'll keep bringing this up, because as a parent myself of three children that are looking at three very different versions of what school might look like next year. The more I look at this, the more I realize it is not what you think it's going to be. It is going to be completely different. Now, understand me, you can see me with my hands up there, and I've got my mask on. We're going to need to make sure the teachers have the ability to project so that the students can hear. It is different talking with a mask on. So in so much of what we do and our expression is done through facial expression. So I think that's something that we'll have to learn as well. Um, this parent group, we also videotaped, and we're working on the video. They had tons of great questions. But again, this is three feet apart. Another question that came up, can the teachers decorate the walls? Yes. But it's not going to look like that typical elementary classroom where you've got your different places where you go, and you're on the rug to begin with, and the teacher's in the rocking chair reading a book. You know, I think of, you know, one of my days at Miss Dicky's class, and all the different stations we went to. And like, she wore me out, like, it was exhausting. Same, I was that way. I mean, they've, I don't know, elementary teachers work you a little too hard, if you ask me. Um, but their experience teaching is going to be different as well, because you're not going to be rotating to those stations. You're not going to be working with that partner or a group of partners where you're putting together, oh, what, what do we make? Uh, it's one of the STEM assignments we had. I can't remember what we made. Sort of catapult? Um, I don't remember, but I was working with three other students, and we were literally right next to each other, doing the work based on the assignment. So school's going to look really, really different. Alright, so I'll keep going from there. Again, these slides, because I know everyone's going to wanna see them. Um, they will be online as well. So work in progress. So if you're sitting there watching, or as a parent, as a guardian, as an interested third party, or a board member, or students, or student interns, this is just a small sampling of the work that's still left in progress. Um, we have hundreds of questions from teachers we still need to answer. Um, we have, I believe, over a hundred questions from parents we still need to answer. And other additional work in progress is arrival and dismissal procedures, staff meeting guidelines and protocols. We all read the case of two hundred and fifty-six, and don't quote me on the numbers. COVID-positive teachers, I believe in Gwinnett County, Georgia, well, they were together for professional development. And they were, you know, not doing it virtually, and a lot of people got COVID. Um, I don't know the spacing or all the details, but it was professional development. They were there. Uh, we need to identify designated spaces for quarantine areas, uh, tennis procedures for distance learning, videos to teach students about routines and hygiene, and students who have to quarantine at home. So that was one of the questions I know Trusty Afros had, Trusty Cook had, Trusty Bank, and I believe Trusty Baron. What happens to the kids that are going to be at home one day, fourteen days, twenty-four days, whatever it's going to be when it comes to COVID-nineteen? So we've been able to start embed a couple different things. We also know that there's a couple ideas we want to run past building administrators. And we wanna really give some great options as far as what that might look like. So that is part of the work we are still doing. I know everyone's hope for this evening was we'd have every single question answered. But it's kind of like I said, um, earlier, and not trying to make an excuse, just it's a fact, literally for every ten questions we answer, five new ones come in that no one's really thought of, or even, you know, wasn't on anyone's radar at that point. So in-person learning, elementary would be from nine oh five to three fifty-five. So nine oh five to ten oh five is allocated for students, specials, asynchronous classroom teacher prep time. Ten oh five to ten fifteen, students arrive for delayed in-person instruction, start time, teachers in the room. And ten fifteen to three fifty-five, instruction with a focus on core content, lunch and recess, Google Meet with special teachers. And then COVID-specific, students will not utilize lockers and or coat rooms unless necessary. And these will be spaced apart. Students will be required to report directly to classrooms upon arrival. Hand washing will be required in all classrooms as part of the school day. Hand sanitizer stations in all classrooms, recess and outdoor opportunities will be scheduled for needed breaks. Specialist teachers document attendance for asynchronous virtual classes. Specialist teachers would also facilitate a fifteen to twenty-minute live virtual instruction during the school day on their scheduled day to maintain the teacher-student connections. Elementary classroom teachers remain in the classroom. The middle school in-person schedule. Eight twenty to nine twenty, allocated for student specials, asynchronous. Nine twenty to nine thirty, students arrive for delayed in-person instruction, start, start time, teachers in the room. Nine thirty to three ten, instruction will focus on a core content. Lunch and recesses will be scheduled. Google Meet with the special teachers. COVID-specific, students will not utilize lockers and or coat rooms unless necessary, and these will be spaced apart. Students will be required to report directly to classrooms upon arrival. Hand washing will be required in all classrooms as part of the.
I think we've got a technical problem.
Yeah.
Um, someone from his, he froze. He's back.
Is demonstrating some problems with the virtual program.
That's okay. Pat's back. He froze for a second. You're back. Um, I think you were at middle school. Yeah, you're back.
Okay, let me, let me pull it back up. Sorry about that. Let's also go back to elementary, because I wanna make sure. Again, if you're watching, I know you're tired. I apologize, but thank you for staying on. Uh, it's like the last episode of MASH, it just kept going. Elementary in person, elementary in person schedule. It is a delayed in-person start. Right? So understand that school starts at ten oh five, that the specials are asynchronous from nine oh five to ten oh five. So sample schedule, A day and B day, what would it look like for specials? Sis, sixth grade, world language and P on A day. B day would be band, orchestra, art, design, tech, drama, health and foods. Seventh grade, A day, band, orchestra, choir. And you can kind of read and see how they rotate. Again, this will all be put on the Blueprint webpage. High school in-person schedule, this has been modified compared to what students have done the past couple years. Seven twenty-five to eight fifty-five, first and second hour. Nine oh two to ten thirty, third and fourth hour, where you see where it says COVID protocols. We'll get to COVID-specific things in a minute. Ten thirty to one, fifth and sixth hour, A, B, C, or D lunch. So again, try to mitigate as much as possible by dividing it into four lunches instead of three. And then seventh or eighth hour, one oh five to two thirty. COVID-specific, students will not utilize lockers unless necessary, and these will be spaced apart. Students will be required to report directly to classrooms upon arrival. Hand washing will be required as part of the school day. Hand sanitizer stations in all classrooms. So I don't have a visual for this one, but imagine the beginning of the school day. The expectation is the students, as they walk in the building, they go directly to their first or second hour class. That they're not in the hallways, just kind of hanging out, maybe visiting a friend, or doing something like that. Because we wanna try to keep them within the cohorts as much as possible, they would be expected to go directly to their room. Bloomfield Virtual, so is virtual learning right for my child? And we've talked about this before, just trying to make sure we cover it again. Students in grades K through five will need an adult or order a sibling to help support for initial virtual navigation and time management. Again, we've gone to Zoom, it's only platform. Again, not that they're going to be required to look at the screen the whole time, but the ability to log on, log into Zoom for the day, click mute when necessary, click the camera off when necessary while they're working on their work, but not to have to continue to log into that. Expectations will mirror in-person teaching and learning. Bloomfield Hill Schools teachers will create lessons and activities that engage the student in the virtual school environment utilizing innovative practices. Bloomfield Schools provide a device, an iPad for K for one, phone book for seconds and twelve, to every student upon enrollment and completion of the technology agreement. Students enrolled in Bloomfield Virtual may participate in extracurricular activities that happen outside of the classroom day, including sports, clubs, and student organizations. Provided that we are in phase four or five. If we are in phase one through three, all extracurricular activities are canceled. So learning at home, we've talked about this before. How's it different than what we did in the fall? There's a set schedule. Um, more live or direct synchronous instruction, attendance is taken, access to materials, progress, grades. Um, students maintain relationships with the peers and their teachers while learning from home. And then some of the staff professional development. Remember, when we talk about PD, we're not just talking about single events. So often when you think professional development, especially in the business world, it's like, well, did you go to that conference? Well, yeah, there's things like that, but you don't learn your craft as a teacher because of one single event. Professional development is something you're continuing to do, whether you're working with a colleague, whether you're doing research, whether you're talking to your building administrator, while you're working with instructional specialists. Those are all things that are professional development that you're always doing. Learning platforms, I know some of the feedback we received last year was there are too many platforms that were in use that made it confusing for students and parents. So learning platforms, K through eight is Google Classroom, and nine through twelve is Canvas. So registration about Bloomfield Virtual, July twenty-first with the preregistration. August tenth, coming up on Monday, we have our information event. So we're going to host a live virtual information event to answer questions from students and families. Events will, the event will also be recorded for later viewing. August eleventh to eighteenth is the registration window to participate in Bloomfield Virtual for one or both twenty-twenty, twenty-one school year semesters. Students must register during the registration window. Late registrations will not be accepted. And the reason is, we actually need two staff. We need to create schedules. Um, and that timeframe is extremely, extremely tight and cannot be moved beyond the eighteenth. Uh, August tenth to be determined, orientation event, uh, sometime in August after the registration window closes. Students and their families will be invited to attend a virtual orientation, uh, to the Bloomfield Virtual Experience. So again, that's going to be Monday. Part of what we're doing is we're looking at the questions that have been submitted and working on having that as part of the presentation, um, that guys, some of the things we're going to present, because we know there's so many questions that are still out there. Uh, social emotional learning, I will turn that over to Margaret Schultz.
Hi, I'm still here. Hi, everyone. Um, so I'm gonna be really brief, and this is not going to be all encompassing of all of our social emotional learning by any stretch of the imagination. But I wanted, we wanted to take some time to share just some of the, the new work that we've been doing. We're still gonna be continuing Prepare You. Um, and restorative practices and all of the different programs that, that we've been working on for years and doing a great job with. But, um, obviously with the pandemic of COVID and the racial injustice that's happened, um, over the past few months, it was really important that we took some time with staff to spend really digging into what we wanted to come back to in the fall. Um, and so we have a team that's been working with, with me since July fifteenth to create a plan, uh, for the twenty-twenty-one school year, and it's encompassing remote learning and face-to-face, um, and also Bloomfield Virtual. And I've been leading it. There's administrators, teachers, there's actually, and I, we have a secretary that's been at Bauer's Farm Staff. It's been really representative of, of the district. Um, we have about thirty, I think thirty people on the team, and they, they haven't all been at every meeting. But, um, I've been excited about, you know, just, and, and they've been excited, um, about that volunteering and, and doing this work together. Um, and, and a lot of it is about, we've, we started off really focusing on staff wellness and have spent a lot of time really digging into what that means. Um, knowing that our staff cannot support our students if they are also not taken care of. And so how, how do we do that in a way that makes sense? And what does that look like, knowing that our world is, our world is really not, not the same? Um, and Pat, can you switch to the next slide?
Yes.
Thank you. So there's three big things that have come out of that group. The first one is that. Every school, every week will dedicate thirty minutes to social emotional learning time. So we'll take throughout, uh, it'll, it'll be different in each building. The principal will obviously work with the staff on what's best, but that there will be thirty minutes that's dedicated to, to SEL. Um, and it'll be built off of Castle. Which is, I, I can't remember if I said that, but the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning. Built off of Castle's five competencies. And so it'll, and they'll build off of one another and we're. Building that work for both face to face and, um, and remote. So it'll be something obviously that we can carry through past the twenty twenty one school year. But we're starting to, to build in that routine. The second goal is for us to just reimagine what meetings look like. And how in every meeting we're focusing on the wellness of staff. So it may be a check in in the beginning. It may be staff going through a mindfulness routine or staff having opportunity to experience. A yoga, a mindfulness routine, some, uh, just any sort of different things that we would also. Hope that the staff would then take that to the students. And then the third thing that we're working on is, is this idea of daily check ins. Um, and we kind of changed the phrasing to call it daily routines checking in classroom community. Cause the idea is that we need to continue to build. We talk a lot about relationships, but we haven't always formalized for our staff what we mean when we say that. So what do those routines look like that help to build relationships so that students feel comfortable? Sharing how they're feeling, sharing if they're not okay, so that we can, we can intervene appropriately. Um, and all of those, the, the interventions we're working, those are kind of separate from this. We're working on those with, um, social workers, psychologists and counselors as well as administrators. So there's still a lot of work to be done, but we just kind of wanted to update you on the work that's been happening with. With this particular group to build out a social emotional learning plan for this school year. That's it.
Thank you. And any discussion in the vote has already taken place.
We have some questions. Jennifer, uh, actually let me make sure, um, sorry, Mark.
Thank you. Um, two questions and then a, a comment. If you go back to the elementary school schedule slide, please.
Yes, give me one second. Virtual or in person?
In person. Thank you. Uh, I'm just confused. It, it says ten oh five students arrive for the delayed in person instruction start time. This nine oh five to ten oh five, that's taking place at home?
That is correct.
So when's their transportation? Like if it starts at nine oh five, when does it end and when does the bus come?
I think, um, I think Pat remembering from the last meeting, we went through this. So it's going to be Mark, it's going to be a video. So students, in theory, they, they won't be doing it from nine oh five to ten oh five. That's really a teacher's prep time. So the night before, in essence, the student would be doing that, um, you know, that hour, that, that.
Thank you.
Second, the bus schedule, we've checked the bus schedule to make sure that the routes can be run with the different tiers. Based on the start and end times for.
Concern wasn't with the bus because it was just trying to figure out how you get from home to school in five minutes. I forgot.
They run really fast, Mark, really fast.
Second one had to do, if I understood it correctly. The hand washing every so often or at the beginning of the day. And I was just kind of picturing, you know, when I went to Lompine, there was. One bathroom in each classroom and I'm picturing twenty students lined up to go in that one bathroom. And I went to West Hills, there were very few bathrooms and I'm picturing fifty kids lined up. To go in the bathroom to wash their hands. And then at the high school, um, I don't know that we did the greatest job setting up the, the bathrooms and the learning communities. How's that going to work with hand washing?
So it'll be hand washing and also the use of hand sanitizer.
Okay.
Um, if you think of the high school level, they're more comfortable with that. And one thing I learned, I shared this a couple of meetings ago. Is that it's, it's not just the washing, but it's the friction. And so we need to make sure we're really educating all of our students and staff. That when they're washing their hands, there needs to be a lot of friction. To help break up if you do have covid nineteen on your hands. Again, you're talking about all those granular things. Yeah, a lot of that we continue to work on. It is not going to look, and I can't say this enough. And it doesn't matter where. It, it doesn't matter if you're, you know, in Fordham Prep, you're in the Bronx, New York. It doesn't matter if you're at Modern Day in California or Bishop Gorman in Vegas. Or you're Bloomfield Hill Schools. It is not going to be the school that you left in March. It is a totally different experience.
So my last kind of, thank you for answering that. If, if you can go back to the first slide in the, the second part of the deck. The one that said option one.
Give me one second.
So I think, and this is more directed to the other board members as we go forward here tonight. Uh, I, I think this is a bit. Understated. Uh, the way I see this is we kind of have. Uh, option A, B, and C, and under option A. Uh, we can decide tonight that we're going to go with what's on this screen. Which is face to face in person learning with the option to go virtual. And that's one thing we can do. So that's face to face with the virtual option. Understanding that they could come back to us any day and say, but that's not going to work, everybody's at home. Uh, option B would be to say. We're remote learning, meaning everybody's at home in the virtual academy. And that will open up in person sometime later, once things are a little bit more under control and understood. And option C. Would be to say, we're not ready to decide yet between option A and option B. We need a little bit more information. And we should reconvene in the next week or ten days. I know parents wants decisions right now. But there's a awful lot of stuff that's come out tonight in public comment. And there's a, a lot of questions that we've raised tonight, but I wanted to be clear. As we go forward to the public who's listening, that this, it's not. What's on this screen is not option one versus option number two. Those are choices with, in option A that involve face to face learning. Option B, there is no face to face learning. Everybody's at home. And option C for the board tonight is that we gather more information. You guys have done in heroic effort of pulling this whole thing together. And I've been struggling quite a bit with. You know, what is our role? Is the board to offer our, to vote based on our opinion tonight? Or rather to assess the due diligence that's been done? And as long as we're comfortable with all the due diligence that's been done. Then, then bless it. And I'm really struggling with that, but I just wanted to, maybe my fellow board members feel differently about what I see as option A, B, and C. But that's the way I kind of see things that this slide that's up here right now. Is only option A and that we do have options B and C.
Let me, um, let me, let me, let me jump in here. So, um, this is my understanding. So Pat and his team have been spending, so the last board meeting, we gave. Pat and his team the direction to go with, you know, the plan is. Parents have a choice, full five days a week or virtual academy. My understanding is now Pat is, and his team are presenting that. Us as a board, along with the safety protocols that need to go to Oakland Health. Us as a board will be approving or not approving. His recommendation to go, to have the option to go for parents either five days a week back to school. Or the virtual academy. We will vote tonight to either approve that. Or not approve it. If they don't approve it, then they have to come back to the board sooner rather than later. Because we said registration for our parents is between August tenth and August eighteenth. To come back with, you know, whether it's probably the only other option at this point would be a hundred percent virtual. So that's how I look at what we're voting on. Because we cannot give our community, we can't let them hang, there's too much anxious out there. We can't let them hang out there with like, oh, the board's going to have another seven days. People right now need to know, it's my opinion, need to know what the plan is tonight.
I hear what you're saying, but as I understood this and as I read the agenda. The, the motion that's on here is to approve, approve the preparedness and response plan. Which was the first deck, which was if we're face to face, this is the safety plan and these are the elements. And that has to go to the ISD. And I, I'm a hundred percent behind that in the terms of there's been tremendous due diligence. Everything has been tremendous due diligence and I applaud the whole administration on this. The second question, and that is relative to what I call option A, which involves face to face. And virtual academy, that's a yes or no. But before you get to that is, should we be doing that to start the year? Or should we potentially be starting the year at home? And then maybe four weeks in on October fifth. Bring everybody back once we know more. And I also understand, and this is going to be, Paul, where everybody wants clarity and I want for everybody to have clarity. And, and, but we could decide tonight, we're going with this, what I call option A that has parts one and two to it. And then tomorrow, everything could change.
Absolutely, absolutely. The governor could come out with an emergency meeting. So sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
There's going to have to be tremendous flexibility here for the administration. And if we say, okay, we're going to go ahead with this face to face for some students and the virtual academy for others. That's going to have to be with the understa, that's not going to bind the administration to say that they can't come back to us. Four days from now, even if the governor doesn't go back to phase three and say, you know what? We, we've looked into this more, we, and we've considered this more and it just doesn't work. And I don't want the board to then look at them and say, no, we voted that it's face to face and virtual, you don't have a choice. There is no remote only option. And, uh, that would be really troublesome to me, so.
Uh, it's my understanding that there's no rigidity to any of this, right? Cause we realize that we're in a fluid situation. And we plan and prep every day, understanding that the situation could change every day.
Then what's the second vote tonight? Because I'm looking, there's one motion on here, which has to do with the prepared and response plan. And there's obviously needs to be a second motion under D that goes to what is the first day of school look like? And.
Yes, Mark, and, and, and either we could getting, you know, to the point for clarity. Either we could amend the motion that we have right now. And add to it, you know, and I kind of wrote it out to add, you know, um, to add along with our face to face and virtual academy plans as presented. Or we could have a second motion that says, you know, we're approving our face to face plan and virtual academy as presented.
Do it as two parts because the first part, I'm absolutely on board with the second part. I'm convinced that as far as it's a face to face or virtual academy. It, it's a, the way it's done is the best it could possibly be done under these circumstances. I'm just not sure after everything I've heard tonight. Um, and I came in planning to approve that, but I'm not so sure that the first day of school shouldn't be remote and, uh. For everybody. And I'm struggling with that. I'll turn off my microphone.
All right, but I, I think, no, no, and I think, you know. Lisa, I just want to make a comment. So I, I think we need to provide clarity for our community. What we're doing tonight for registration as of September eighth. I, I'm not, I'm not, listen, if the governor comes out tomorrow and says we're in phase three, of course we got to go back. If there's something beyond our control that happens. You know, of course we got to be nimble, but we, we have to provide clarity. We can't keep punting this decision. I think our community, unfortunately, after our last board meeting, or board meeting two weeks ago. Was under the impression that these plans were set and voted on. So that's why tonight we're going to, you know, vote on these plans in addition. You know, to the preparedness that we need to send, but we're going to vote on these plans. To make sure they have the direction, our community has a direction that they need so they can make a decision.
Okay, uh. I think I was next, anyway. I, I'm not saying that. Postponing this and following, uh, the example of Ann Arbor and other schools like Wild Lake. Gross Point, other districts that have said, we're going to revisit this and give your, give ourselves a date. Knowing that we have to be flexible because we don't know what the numbers are. I, I'm not saying that's not the way to go, and maybe that's what we do decide to do. But I, I feel like we cannot leave tonight with anything at all up in the air because we're down to the wire. We're the last district giving people, um, we've the latest date to give. People a chance to, I mean, this is an impossible task assigning teachers. The cohort sizes are really small online and in person. And you've got parents waiting at the edge of their seat because they don't know whether to take the virtual academy. Because like me, it's missing core classes that their kids need. And but they, we can't get them until we know what the cohort sizes are. So as it stands now, I, I, then that was going to be my first question. What, uh, what are we going to do about, there's two in particular that are core classes that are missing. We still have a situation, I brought this up a month ago. Neither one of my kids have math classes they can take. They're not, they don't offer them through machine virtual, they're not online. So I have no choice but to go in person and I don't want to do that. What do people like me do? Okay, if we leave tonight without an answer to that, my kids can't pick up a class after Halloween. It's a math class, I need to know what to do with them tonight. We cannot, and Pat and Todd and Kelly, I mean, she's juggling teacher requests for online. Someone to teach in person. We, it, we're in this cyclical problem. I think Jennifer called, coined it that a while ago, and I think that's perfect. Because people are waiting to see how strong the virtual academy is. What kind of classes are going to be offered? Who are teachers teaching these classes? They're waiting, they're going to wait till August seventeenth maybe, or the very latest till they see, uh, the orientation. That's really late. And then we have to assign teachers and, and so parents won't know till the zero hour what classes. I, I would like to do the virtual academy, but right now I can't. All right, that's problem number one. If we decide to wait till a certain date in October, we can't then somehow filter kids face to face. I don't see how we can do that. Because they're already part of a cohort and already part of a class. You're breaking them up unless we have them pick. Like we normally would. And everything stays the same. And then we just decide we're, we're keeping them at home for the time being. Maybe that's the way to go, you know, uh, to proceed with the dates that we have and the, and the choice that we have. Except the only difference is we're not comfortable opening the building just yet. I, I don't know, but, um. We're at a standstill right now because we can't make cohorts and classes.
Jennifer?
Yeah, so I have some prepared remarks, but.
Just a second, Mr. Watson.
Do that before we vote, you know, like in discussion.
President Colin, Superintendent Watson put a question mark in the chat, maybe we want to hear from him.
Sure.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt. One thing that I think the board needs to understand as part of this plan. You have the authority as the board and only you to close school at any time and have everyone go online. That is at the board's sole discretion as part of the plan that the governor has given to the Board of Education. All Boards of Education. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thanks, Pat. Jennifer?
Yeah, so, uh, without being too. But I do want to say more later, uh, you know, struggling with this. And knowing what we vote today. I, I would agree with Mark that we, we keep our dates. We, August tenth, August eighteenth. We, we proceed with all that. But seriously consider. Starting the persons who would choose in person, online. And then morph them into school. If we've, are convinced it's safe to do so after four to five weeks. And I, I, I won't say, you know, I have a lot of thoughts about why I'm saying this. I don't want to take up a lot of time and get into that right now. But that is sort of where I am with this today.
Um, we'll just go, Cynthia, I have you after Janiki Howard.
Thank you, President Colin. I had two questions for the superintendent from the slides. I saw.
Do you want me to pull them back up, trustee Baron? I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's quite all right. I think you can, I think we can handle this verbally. One was for middle school, and I assume it applies to high school. I saw that we had a full performing arts program, which is band, orchestra, choir, and drama. I just wanted to ask whether that can be done safely, considering, obviously, you're speaking and articulating a lot and just, I'm not sure whether that can be done without having significant COVID spread. And then the second thing is, it kind of follows up on what Lisa said, and I just haven't understood this. Lisa, as a parent, I think, is more into the detail than I. What classes will or will not be available in Bloomfield Virtual? So how much, if if a parent wants a child not to be in the buildings, not face to face, they want to go Bloomfield Virtual, but if it sounds like there are certain, either individual classes or subsets of classes, which will not be offered through Bloomfield Virtual, so you've got that parent in a catch twenty-two. Is that correct?
Well, let me answer the first question.
Okay.
So the first question is about band, orchestra, and, you know, those classes.
In particular.
Right. So K through eight, all the virtuales, sorry, all the specials are online. They're all asynchronous and they're virtual. At the high school, those opportunities are still there. And so we're still working on what the best practices are going to be. For example, we know we can go outside for some of them, but in Michigan, that's a day to day, you know, situation. Is it going to be that, you know, I want to make sure, I give you some additional detail. And I know they've been working on this, and I haven't had a chance to update in the past two days. So either Todd or Sarah, do you want to weigh in a little bit?
Let me just make sure I understood. Let me make sure I understood, because you went a little quick there, what you just said. You're saying that elementary and middle for performing arts are going to be asynchronous?
Correct. K through eight, all specials are virtual and asynchronous. And part of that was also to get additional room back from the building, so we were able to capture that space.
So when you say asynchronous, they're doing that from home?
They can do it the night before, they can do it from home. Oh, sorry, Sarah, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's right.
All right. So that therefore, there will be social distancing because they're sitting in their bedroom or their living room and doing it?
That is correct.
Okay.
Sarah, you want to weigh in too?
But but you're saying high school is still T V D on these?
High school will be happening in person because we have the space and they can go outside for those courses.
What do we do in November and December?
They have the biggest room in that building, and they also have the common areas that they can use.
Okay.
I mean, in November, December, they may or may not be able to play their instruments, but they are, they wear masks.
But they are playing in football games and it is pulled out.
Well, for, for.
It is.
And the reason I differentiate between band and the others is, you know, I saw band camp and they all have got little, you know, covers on the the end of the horns, and they've got diaper pads for spit valves, so that there are ways to adjust for that, I think, because they did it last week. But I don't know how you do that for choir.
Yeah, inside's going to be difficult. So some of the things I was able to see nationally, a lot of times, students recorded their singing at home, and then they were able to show it and get evaluated. Concerts were done all via Zoom. But you're right, you know, depending on the size of the space, and there's all the studies on, like you're talking about, you know, aerosol and the spread, if you're outside, it depends on the wind factor.
We don't, we don't, we don't need to solve it. We don't need to solve it here, obviously. I just want to make sure that we are very conscious of the fact that, you know, we don't want to have super spreader situations in these kind of programs.
But you bring up a good point. That's that granular work we're still working on.
Okay, that's fine. And then on the Bloomfield Virtual.
What's your question? Do you have a question, Howard?
Oh, yeah. Well, the question was, what, what class, this is the catch twenty-two, what classes are not, that are going to be available in building are not going to be available in Bloomfield Virtual, which will put the parents kind of in in a box where they are concerned on the health, and they want to be at home, but they're, but they might, in that situation, not be able to get the curriculum that they need for, you know, graduation requirements or other types of programs if they're involved.
So this is where it gets very complicated.
I'm sorry?
This is where it gets very complicated. There, there is, every course that is needed for graduation is offered on Bloomfield Virtual. So if you look at the chart that was put out earlier, that, those are all the green classes. Those are all the required courses in order for a student to graduate. Once we had that in place, then we went and looked at the AP classes and to see where we could put those in. So those are now in place. So there's ones that are in purple that are, will be taught by Bloomfield Hills High School teachers. The ones in teal depend upon enrollment from the virtual academy as to whether or not they'll be taught by Bloomfield Hills High School teachers, or they'll go through Michigan Virtual. So the other thing we've said is, we are looking at, as soon as a student on August eleventh says that they want to go to Michigan Vir, or Michigan Virtual, sorry, as soon as a student on August eleventh said they want to do Bloomfield Virtual, we're going to pull that student's course selections and start to do a course count, so we can start to see what courses are filling up and what we're able to offer. So if Lisa has, you know, twenty-two friends who all take the honors class that her son wants, then that class will be offered virtually, for sure. If it's less than that number, then we have to look at whether or not we can administratively move it in the schedule. It is frustrating for all of us, but by letting it go to August eighteenth, we're giving families the most options that they can have with the information at the time.
So.
I'm a little bit confused.
Can I, can I? I have, I have the floor right now, please. It's my question. Let me just finish up the taking what you just said. So, so it sounds like core classes are covered. AP classes is is T V D depending upon how the signups go over the next couple of weeks. And if the, so it's possible that some AP classes might not be taught in virtual based upon the cohort, how it all works out?
It might not be taught by Bloomfield Hills High School teachers, but they'll be available through Michigan Virtual.
Wondering about, because my daughter took classes through Michigan Virtual, and so those are ongoing, even if you're at the regular high school.
Right.
You can take them online, even if you're going face to face.
There's core classes that are not offered, and they're not virtual.
All right, all right, just.
Can I, can I reclaiming my time, please?
No, actually, by Robert's Rules of Orders, you don't get unlimited questions. We can make it go, everybody gets one question. You can't just sit on the floor for a half hour.
This is the same question. I haven't changed.
And then follow up questions.
I have, I have a very concrete example that might help elucidate this. Okay, so my son is slated to take honors pre-cout this year.